I'm going to call the meeting over. I have a motion open the meeting, please.
So may I?
Second here. Sorry. Okay, so, um, Stop Planning Board meeting on Thursday, February 9th to 7:00 PM at the Stoughton Public Library Community Room, 8 U. Box Street, Stoughton, Mass. The relative following the agenda for the purpose of receiving public comments and they may be taken out of order. Um, during my comments, I'm going to mention that item four on the agenda dealing with the assisted living, the applicant has requested a continuance. I have a letter here saying, "I am writing request a continuance to the Planning Board hearing scheduled for Thursday, February 9th, 2023, in the above referenced matter for reasons set forth below. The applicant has engaged Blossom Engineering, Inc. to conduct required soil testing, which has been scheduled for tomorrow, February 8th. Shortly thereafter, we would expect to utilize the soil evaluation revised set of civil plans. We'll also address the comments of the technical review letter from the Assistant Town Engineer, Craig Blosswell." With additional information, we hope for more complete presentation, productive use of the board's time and energy as March meeting. So do we have a meeting we can set this forth, um, at this point because we have to put it to our date certain?
Um, right now, we have room on the, um, March 9th agenda.
Can you hear me? Is he here?
There's room on the March 9th and the March 23rd agenda.
Okay, so let's move this to the March 9th agenda to hear our motions and other things. Don't be late. Okay, in my own favor.
Aight.
All right, so if not, move to the March 9th agenda. So if anybody is here for the assisted living, it will be continued to the March 9th agenda at this point in time. Okay, um, first item on the, um, agenda will be added number two. We have an approval not required. Could I have the applicant come up and make a presentation, please?
Is everything good?
That's fine, thank you.
My name is Bill Salton with Curry and Hanson.
You're going to have to get close to that mic, though.
Okay. Is it on? Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, Bill Salton, Curry and Hanson, survey is named one. Uh, what we have is a Form 8 application plan for, uh, two lot, uh, two lot project. Uh, it was originally, uh, it was originally three separate lots. They were, they went to the Board of Appeals and they got approval to create one lot combining two small lots together. And the second lot is the remaining of, of the, of the lots that one was owned by the other person. So the lot number 440, Mr. McGowan owned, owned the house at 440. He also owned a separate lot, uh, right behind it, 60-foot, uh, wide lot, Monol Plan. And there, and Jed Angeles owned an additional 60-foot. The Board of Appeals gave, granted the variance to combine those two 60-footers into a lot and then to create and leave remaining land with the existing house of 440 as another second lot. So the, the, the approval letter recorded, uh, variance was in the patent, five, so we're looking forward to including for those two lots after the action for the Board of Appeals.
And for Planning Board setback, all of your, um, required setbacks would help for the, uh, for the lot?
Yeah, the, with, uh, the planning board, uh, the Board of Appeals was just granting variances to create the lots. There'd be a separate plan, uh, there was a plan showing a proposed, uh, you know, colonial style home on there with the Board of Appeals, but we, that'll be all the zoning setbacks, you know, as far as construction phasing. So there'd be no need for any of the variances. It was really just to create two separate lots, leave the existing as it is on one lot and then creating two lots or combining two lots into one, uh, one building of the block. Again, it's a small, it'll be a, uh, you know, a four bedroom colonial, it'll certainly meet the, the other, the other community, so it was, it was, uh, yeah, it was granted.
Very good, any comments?
Yeah, just that, uh, you know, our department had, uh, reviewed the plan for, uh, content that's required on a, a plan of this nature and to, uh, ensure that it met the required, uh, lot frontage. Uh, obviously, we know it doesn't meet the area, but they have relief from, uh, the zoning Board of Appeals and also to ensure that it has adequate access off of a public, uh, constructed way, which Ellsworth Avenue is, uh, fully constructed and provides adequate access to the lot. So we feel it meets all the requirements for the approval of A and R.
Thank you, Craig. Any members of the Board of Appeals?
Uh, Craig, this is on, gonna be on septic?
Uh, yeah, I believe there is, uh...
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'll be on septic. There is sewer and morgue, but the elevation would have to be a pump. And at this time, at this time, it'll be on, on septic. There's been regulation tests.
And a sufficient room after the, after the house for the bleaching field and septic?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's all been basically laid out schematic, but there's in the front, on the back. It has the area to accommodate that under all the water outlets.
There's water there?
There's, there's...
I believe so.
Water in the street.
There's water on the street, okay.
Yes, yes.
Anybody else in the board? Anybody from the public who have any questions? Or here, we're looking for who?
So may.
On favor?
Aight.
You're all set?
Thank you very much. We can, you're welcome.
We have the mile out here if you want to sign.
Yep, we can sign it now. Will we pick that up later? We'll sign it, uh, Craig wants to get it picked up. You want Kevin to pick it up later tomorrow or do you want to give it to him now? You're gonna sign it on now? We'll sign it now.
Yeah, we'll just...
Send it away.
We'll get it to him.
It's unusual. We take it.
We try to move things along.
Yes, I know. In a long time, then we'll be treated.
I have a skinny one, too. You're very well prepared. I have one.
You're equipped.
Is this, is this the, 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 the end of the copy? The legal, I can get it. So basically, it's a continued on the last, we changed it out. Yeah. Just in case I need.
Okay.
Yeah, first.
They're trying to violate and they give us a call.
Again, thank you very much.
I just ask, Chris.
Item number three on the agenda, um, a public hearing will be held by the Stoughton Planning Board, Gray Hall, and the third floor, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., Thursday, February 9th, 2023, 7:00 PM on the petition of the applicant, the owner, Town of Stoughton, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., represented by Doran Whittier Architects, 260 Merrimack Street, New Report, Mass., the site plan approval under section 10.6, site plan approval of the Town of Stoughton zoning bylaws for the proposed construction of the 25,200 square foot, most floor area fire station and 31 parking spaces to be located at 400 Prospect Street. Assessors map 066, watch 217 and 218, assessors map 007, watch 025 and 026, and assessors map 78, watch 001 and 002, in an RB residential B zoning district. The site plan application and plans may be viewed at the office of the Stoughton Planning Board, Engineering Department, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., during normal business hours. The petition, and/or as representative or any other person, society to be heard in this matter, should appear at that time and place designated. Just so that you all know, um, this project was considered a prior evening and the entire record is being incorporated and is available to the Planning Board webpage and in the project file. Okay. This project also was advertised a second time, just so everybody's knowledge. All right, so at this point in time, I would like the applicant and where we're going to be presenting tonight, come up. We will get out of your way, let you do the presentation, and we'll come back. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good evening.
Stick your name forward.
Sure thing. Glenn Gollman, Doran Whittier Architects.
Okay.
Sound okay?
Sound good.
Good. Thanks for seeing us again. Your goal tonight is just to walk through again, for the new folks especially, but walk through the, the, the design, the history, any backstory you have, but as I, as we understood it from the last meeting, the two critical key items were traffic and the Conservation Commission process. We've got our traffic consultant here who will take over half, about halfway through the presentation. Um, but I was happy to report that the Conservation Commission saw and approved the project on January 5th. So the few other items that were in the engineer's comment letter have been addressed as well. With that said, right, so the project, very quickly, very simply, we've got two fire stations now, the existing Freeman Street building and 1550 Central. The goal is to get the Freeman Street operations into a modern building that will fit them down and for the foreseeable future. The site at 400 Prospect Street worked out for a number of pretty positive reasons, um, not the least of which is the response time. Our consultant, we use on all of our public safety projects, analyzes all the call data for years and years in a community such as Stoughton, models the existing to remain station and any proposed new site. I think over the years, we've done 16 or 18 different site studies for this. The 400 Prospect Street site is about two tenths of a mile from the mathematical perfect spot for a second station in a two-station model. So this is a fantastic opportunity. We usually don't get that kind of luck. Um, but the project overall is the new station at Prospect Street and then once that's complete, the fire department will move out of Freeman Street. That building will be gut renovated, brought up to some historic character back on the street front, and will become the, the, essentially the fire department's administrative offices and emergency operating center and a public health office. So that is, that's the project as a big picture. The third piece, I think, that's, that's been talked about and perhaps misunderstood is the 1550 Central station is to get work at the end of all of this, but it's to be performed by basically the town facilities folks. There are a couple of offices and we'll, we'll get converted to, to dormitory space for staff. That's it, no, no heavy lift there. But tonight is about Prospect Street, right? 400 Prospect Street. Um, I just run through what the project is. So the site, 8.2 acres, was purchased a year, about a year ago, after an extensive due diligence period by the town before any, any agreement was reached. It, uh, there are wetlands to one edge, we are well away from it horizontally and we're 10, 12 feet higher in elevation than 100-year floodline. So we're high and dry up there, as was shown pretty clearly in the Conservation Commission process with the notice of intent. All that paperwork is filed locally and with MasD EP for anyone who's interested to go into that. Now, again, to your point, Mr. Chair, it's about a 25,000 square foot, two-story building, and this is strictly operations facility. This, there's no offices or meeting rooms, this is really a, a traditional firehouse. Um, the one small piece that has changed about the site since we first met with you is a small easement was granted, as shown on this, this diagram, that allowed the driveway to get a lot straighter and more smooth. We had designed the driveway to make a much sharper S-curve around the, the yellow and red area, which is the adjacent property on it, property. That easement has been granted and filed and is all spared away, so the design is based on having that included. The stormwater management design went through five or six iterations. Uh, the Town Engineering Department and the Conservation Commission were phenomenally helpful, working with our consulting engineers. We're gonna, the, the project will dramatically improve the, the stream crossing on the site. Uh, we've taken every precaution to prevent stormwater from running off unchecked on the site. So there's an extensive underwater, underground water collection system, stormwater collection system, that all the water goes into and if it's an extreme weather event, it may fill up and then will daylight through a series of structures into the nearby watershed. Again, that's all permitted and approved and checked, that box is checked. Uh, the landscape design is simple, we wanted it to be modest, but make a nice front entry, if you will, so on the Prospect Street end of the drive, it'll be landscaped, will be the, the required white vinyl fencing, uh, and a, a project sign announcing the address and that the fire station is up the hill. Um, part of the Conservation Commission process required an extensive, um, invasive plant species mitigation and rightfully, with most of the site where that exists being disturbed with the construction, it's inherently removed, but the areas that were not disturbed are going to be treated and dealt with, um, with the on-file operations and maintenance plan to keep that in check. Because it's, it's significant on the north end of the site. Uh, and then otherwise, on the right side of the drawing, there's some evergreen, um, trees to be planted where the site rises up a little bit. It's, it's the closest side to any of the butter property and we're sensitive to that. Um, so the design tries to increase the, the green space between the new parking area and their, effectively the woods in the backyard. Otherwise, it's, it's a, a mix of, of hardy New England plants and plantings, some, some wild mixed seed mix at the perimeter and some grass along the, the hardscape areas. Uh, this was, this is nice pictures of the plants that are selected for the project. And the design, right, briefly, the, the new fire station has five apparatus bays, 80 feet deep, so these are double-deep bays, um, designed to modern best practice standards. And the sixth bay on the far left is a maintenance bay, a fully equipped maintenance bay, uh, for the fire department's mechanic. The other half of the first floor are all the operational support spaces, the decontamination area for the cleaning of bunker gear, uh, proper areas to store all that equipment, all the mechanical spaces, medical storage, hose storage, um, and a couple of basic offices to write reports and have shift meetings and such. On the second floor is really all the living quarters. There are 14 bunk rooms, there's a day room, a dining room, a kitchen, a study area, a fitness room, and one or two more toilet rooms that are required by code. Um, this design is, is fairly typical now. Instead of gang showers or locker rooms, all the toilets and showers are individual pockets, so you get your gear, your clothes, you go in there, you clean up, you change, so there's... It, it addresses the, the gender specificity issue without getting into the weeds about it. And the exterior, right, it's, it's a simple, solid, durable, corrugated metal, multi-colored wreath, um, building that should be easy to maintain. Uh, and I think what's unique to the project, given that it's set back from the road, is the, the design got a lot simpler than, if, if you recall, the, the building that was proposed on the Armory Site, which was a more traditional municipal building with a lot of masonry and pitch roofs and ostensibly a lot more expensive. So I think while it, it's, it's a little different to be back off the street, it, it helped with this, flat roofs, solid materials, really just again, a traditional operations-based firehouse. And this is where I'm going to turn it over to, uh, to our friends at GPI to discuss traffic and the characteristics of the site. Thanks. For the record, John Diaz with GPI. Uh, so the, the image that you're looking at right now is on Prospect Street at the proposed site drive, so just wanted to show that for perspective to see the sightlines turning, uh, turning out of the driveway from both north and south. We got ample, over 800 feet of building.
Turn the mic. Thank you.
More than ample site distance looking both ways as it's pulling out of the driveway. So the intersection of Crossway, that, at Prospect at Park Street was one of the, the big concerns. Uh, the, the traffic itself is being added to the intersection, we're adding less than a five-second additional delay during the morning peak hours. Virtually no change in operations there, at most we're adding one vehicle to the subbound queue. Uh, the intersection has a low crash rate, comparatively to other unsignaled intersections district-wise, .34. Um, the lines that are out there don't, don't need warrants for traffic signalization. Uh, however, what we wanted to do was to, to make some improvements out there to, to enhance the visibility of the, particularly the crosswalk there, so we're looking at restriping the crosswalk there, restriping the, the stop line, installing new stop signs, um, and then installing an, an emergency vehicle warrant sign for the driveway as you approach from the, the cell. Uh, one of the concerns was can a truck, um, make the turn out if there's a queue of vehicles there? That little inset on the bottom there, there's a 20, there's 24 feet between the tip of that island and the, uh, curb line there, and we'll show in a little bit. We have, uh, some turning templates with trucks and we also took some drone footage of the actual truck making that, that corner with, uh, with vehicles there. Uh, this was just to, to address the concern of the, the traffic signal, um, at the intersection. So what you see up on the left there is out of the Massachusetts amendments to the NUTCD that you can't install a signal unless it meets the, the first warrant, one of eight warrants. Uh, we take counts out there in early January and you do not need any of the warrants of the signalization there, so we can't put a signal in there. At the Fire Station Drive, we, to, to, shall we have, um, visibility and the, the access and ingress of the, the trucks is, is apparent. What we're proposing is a, it's called a, uh, an emergency vehicle hybrid beacon, it's a little different than some of the older signals you've seen at the, um, fire stations. Uh, if you're familiar with what's referred to as the hawk signal for some of the pedestrian crossings, uh, it's similar to that, so that if you look up on the right there, the, the operations, it's, the signal is dark. When, when a car comes in or the trucks have to leave the station, it starts to flash yellow, then goes steady yellow, uh, to a solid with red, and it's a wig light, like a railroad station. And that's to stop the traffic on, on, on Prospect Street and to let the vehicles come out of the fire station. So normally it's dark, so there's no ambient light that's, that's, you know, reflecting down the street, but when a truck does come out over this emergency call, um, the lights will flash and, uh, to give the, the trucks access out. Uh, we showed some new striping, just to enhance the striping, uh, at the intersection there, as well as to just for a little more reinforcement to strike the, uh, do not block intersection, uh, striping at the intersection.
Good clarification.
Yes.
I want you to do, but that's going to be amassed on all four.
Yes. Go ahead. Um, up at Walmart Street, again, traffic can pass from this, it's minimal impacts, no change in operations. Um, this is a little higher crash rate than, than the, the average, uh, so again, part of that is right now out there, the, the pavement markings are really lacking out there. So again, we're gonna, uh, restripe all the crosswalks. If you notice, we're putting the ladder type of crosswalks, which are more visible than the traditional, the, the older two bars that would go across the road. Uh, new stop lines, new, new pavement markings approaching the intersections and, and new stop signs, so, um, with, with the new pavement markings, the new stop signs, certainly the visibility of that intersection will be enhanced. And finally, up at Prospect Street, Pleasant Street, again, minimal impacts from, from the operations of the traffic. We're gonna restripe the intersection, put in the stop lines, new stop sign there. Before I go on to the next one, one of the benefits of this, which is unusual for any type of, um, project that we're doing, is the added benefits that we will see downtown by moving the fire station out of there. Uh, as you know, the, the signal operation, those two signals, they have the, the fire trucks coming out there, they have the preemption of the, the signals, so anytime a truck comes out of there, it's, it's locking up that intersection. So by pulling that operations out of there, that should put the traffic lower downtown. So it's a kind of unforeseen mitigation that's not active, but is a big benefit in downtown. So this was just to, uh, we wanted to look at the, uh, how the trucks could make the movements there, so this is the design vehicle, the fire tru, the fire department's design vehicle. So up in the top left, you see Pleasant or Prospect, uh, the, the trucks can make the lefts, left in, the right out, and the, the lefts to rights, um, from all directions there without, you know, you're not going to be driving up on sidewalks and hitting utility poles. At the Prospect Street, again, if you look there, you see two, two cars can be in the queue there, connect to be more than two vehicles in the queue, and the fire truck can still make the, the movement around those cars even if those cars are stuck in a, stuck in a queue there. And then the Fire Station Drive, obviously that, that's not created yet, but it'll be built, but, uh, the fire, it's a straight night, a three-T intersection, the truck can easily make those movements. And so if you want to...
The light that's, um, proposed, normally dark, that'll trigger when the trucks coming out. Is there any thought of also having something closer to the curve at Park Street, people that are coming down Park, just going straight?
Yeah.
By the time they see that, because a lot of people, I've heard neighbors complain about too, something about the cars come pretty fast.
We can, we can look at, at doing like an advanced, um, perhaps on that, on the static fire station sign we have, if you've seen some of those signs, they're probably like the illuminated borders that, that flash, or we might be able to do something like that. We'll have to look at it because normally, it's, I mean, the nice part is it's, it's a straight shot. The bad part is, is it's a straight shot.
Right.
So I mean, the, the nice part is you, you will, I mean, that's going to be amassed out on the road if it's flashing red, you know, wig lights, you're going to see it from the, from the intersection.
Okay. Is there a normal rule of thumb on a distance on that that's clearly visible?
Yeah, it's, it's typically, I mean, it's, it's usually if you can't see it for, you know, 500 feet, you sort of advance a warning sign. This again, you can see it, you know, out on Park Street coming up, so. But if we, there's nothing to say we can't do it, so if we did want to, it's, the only, the only thing we'd have to do is run a cable down the road, you know, to do that. It would be, basically what it'd be is just some, some kind of, whether it's amber or red, I have to check what, what, what it is, but the signs would just flash as the consideration from that, so if the stop goes, we could do something like that. So on this, uh, so we, we want to show in, in reality, so that's the fire truck and the chief's vehicle, um, how, how a truck can, uh, maneuver through the, the area, uh, in particular make the turn down at the Park and Prospect intersection, so. You can see there's, there's plenty of room for vehicles to make the turn even with other vehicles. Yeah.
Do we know what time of day this was?
That's it. Thank you very much. We're ready for any questions.
This is Greg. We addressed them wherever you want to comment.
One second, sorry. So, Greg, on the comments, right now, your comments letter and the engineering review, where are we with that?
Yeah, so...
Can everybody now hear me? Thank you. Greg, at this point, where is the engineering department on the comments letters, and where are they, is their presentation?
Great, yeah. Yeah, so, we have received and reviewed the most recent set of plans. As you know, we had a pretty extensive review letter our first time around, and we've been working with the designers and the consultants to hammer through all those issues. The project, as you know, has recently gone back to the Conservation Commission for their... and an order of conditions has been issued. We've been satisfied with the stormwater management design for the project, and I feel that the set of plans added before you tonight have addressed all of our comments that are in our initial technical review letter.
So, the plans, as they sit right now, there's no other modifications that you feel can be made from your technical review?
That's correct. The one outstanding item was, you know, the traffic issues that were brought up at a previous planning board meeting, and that's for consideration by the board tonight.
Okay. PM, is there anything procedurally wise with anything right now?
I don't think so.
Any members of the board have any questions right now?
As we've been through the process, everything's been brought up to date, changes have been made. I was saying that we've had several meetings, and all that's been discussed, the changes, the things that have been needed, have all been addressed as, you know, each meeting. We're in good shape with it now.
I'd like to open this up to the public right now, so, one at a time, if anybody does want to come up and speak, I'm going to, you know, one at a time, I'm going to ask you to name, you know, put your name, your address out there, so that we can have that recorded for record. I'm going to need at least one of those seats. If you guys want to just sit down and let them speak, and then we can bring you back for any type of comments or anything as you're going forward. Come on up.
All the firefighters, thank you so much for your efforts. You guys are awesome.
Good evening. My name is Paul Zardi. I'm a resident for Stoner for 19 years. I'm on 307 Prospect Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I haven't been able to attend all the meetings in reference to this project, where I think it was necessary for me to come in tonight, because oftentimes, in a project of this magnitude, some of the small issues that are in my mind may have been overlooked. My biggest concern, and always has been in the town, is safety. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to ride in a ladder truck down Prospect Street at about 20 miles an hour. There's people walking on the sidewalk, and there's some severe road issues and some severe safety issues. Not having a branded curb to protect anyone who's walking on that road, should in the event of a fire truck break a tire right in, score a rock, there's nothing that's going to prevent that truck from going into someone's front yard. So, I don't know if that's something that can be looked into. We have had, over the past four years, an infestation of rodents. From a personal standpoint, I killed 19 myself. Two, three of them, I was capturing them. And when I saw an excavator pull into the BMW building, I was wondering if anybody had an opportunity to go in and see what the status of rats are, if they're having a field day up there. So, that's a concern. My biggest concern, that looks terrible to me. And I drive through towns sharing beautiful, beautiful architectural design buildings, a shuttle piece of the participation and the taxpayers' money showing a beautiful fire station. I mean, I don't see anything that was in that blueprint that can get federal funding for training. There's plenty of money out there, in terms of federal funding, to support half of this project. This is just in the wrong place. It's in a residential, in the woods. It's in the woods. I mean, I don't know who talked this up, and I'm not here to critique anybody with the fire process is, but this is embarrassing to me as a longtime resident. I am not against the fire station. I'm on a Taj Mahal for these guys, and I want a training facility, and I want a police training facility. Our federal money available, I don't know why we can't work with the school committee to grab that property, call it a training center, school. Give them an art center at the end of it. I mean, why are we considering putting a fire station in the woods? Can you answer that question for me?
Sir, I'm going to say this, and I appreciate everybody here's concerns. The planning board, as it is presented, alls we can do is comment on the site as it's presented from a planning standpoint. Number one, safety, which is what we discussed, and number two, the site as to the way it pertains to the zoning bylaws that we have in town, and then try to meet with our design standards in town. The site selection and how that is done was done outside of this purview. I have no way of commenting on it. I have no way of giving you any history to that, and I... we can't do... we, as a planning board, can't do anything to change that. Okay? We can make comments on the safety, we can make comments on the, you know, the design and the site say, the site design and that type of stuff, but as far as the site selection, wherever this is located right now, we can't say anything to that because we have no comment... we were involved in it. There's involvement by other people in town, and so, I know there's a lot of people who want to comment on that tonight, but from our point of view, what our review pertains to cannot, it doesn't enter into that. So, I'm sorry, but that's just the way it is.
No, I'm sorry. Listen, I apologize when I started.
No, and I agree, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood where...
Let's talk about safety. I want to talk about safety. I mean, that plan for the road, I mean, first of all, the kids in the school bus, they actually start bouncing up and down to get to Prospect Street because they want to hit the ceiling with their hands. I mean, that's a safety issue. A firefighter coming down, going out 30 miles an hour, I suggest you wear your helmet, because you're going to get the rot of your life. I mean, that's... and then that presentation on the street, look, I've been there for 19 years, there's a lot going on on that street, and I think you all need to revisit what's going on. If this is going to exist, that street needs curbs on both sides. I mean, I get water in my cellar because there's a sinkhole in front of my house, and no one addresses it. It took four months to get a bottle filled in front of my house. So, am I a little bothered by that? Yeah. Do I look at safety? Yes, there isn't two sidewalks on either side of the street. In that intersection, the gentleman who did the presentation on the intersection, it's going to be a light, and there's no way that, at the end of Prospect Street, that a fire truck is going to be able to access Central Street. That was taken at 11 o'clock on Sunday morning. There's so much traffic, and then to cut down into 127 to bring a truck into that road, they have to put a light in there, so as soon as they get the call...
Understand the...
And the state has to pay for it. The town of Stoughton shouldn't.
See, so, and I think what the gentleman had presented, and I've sat through several meetings about the warrants in both the different areas, unfortunately, the state does have criteria for warrants, and there has to be a certain traffic level, and there has to be a certain items as far as the amount of, you know, what the crash data is and what the traffic level is in those areas, to be able to warrant for the light. That requirement cannot be changed because of the town of Stoughton, and they have to apply to the state to be able to put that light in place, so therefore, us as a board, we can only take the numbers that they have. I can't turn around and tell them to put a light in. There's other projects in town, and these people know that I've actually tried to have lights put in, and actually tried to put on other developers in town, to try to have the lights put in, and I can't get the warrants met. I can't force it, because then what can happen is, if a light does go in those locations, the town of Stoughton becomes liable in a lawsuit down the road if something happened at the light. So, I can't do that, and I can't force the town or force an applicant to put a light in if the warrant doesn't exist. I have to go by the GPI, too much GPI, but any traffic engineer, and now a town has reviewed it with those traffic engineers. I've seen the reviews, I've seen it gone through, so therefore, I can't say to them to put a traffic light in. Is the... do I believe this is a safety issue with that corner? I do. I also have seen what they've presented here, and I do know that the street presently is used by the fire department, so obviously, they know what driving on the street looks like and how they do it. And I welcome firefighters that are here to comment on what it's like to drive on that street. I don't. I'm not a firefighter. I don't drive those vehicles, so I would think their weight would have a lot more than my weight as far as that goes. I agree, we're in a residential area with a firehouse. I'm not saying it's the best area, but again, I'm trying to say I can't change that.
Listen, I'm 65 years old. I'm happy to have a fire station behind me in the woods, but I'm a realist, and I also know what's going on in our future. We're all going to have shirts on that will measure everything, and I'm not some wackadoo, okay? I have three United States patents and two in Canada. All of us will be able to wear shirts, and that station will be able to respond to me having a heart attack before it even happens. So, I'm not against the station. I'm against what it looks like and where it is. I'm a proud Stoughton person. I live here. I mean, the Armory is the place where it should be. I mean, and the safety issue on the street, that street needs to be dug up. New pipes need to be down. I mean, I'm sure the engineer knows.
I think, I'm not going to disagree with you, but again, that needs to be a presentation, maybe before the board of selectmen or other people in this town, that can actually provide the money to have that done. And that's really where, that's where we're going. I'm not... I agree with you, so I'm not...
Don't call me, sir. Don't call me, Paul. The federal money that's available, I'm not blowing smoke, there is a lot of federal money available for training. If we add the training room to that, I mean, seriously, maybe work with the police station and say, hey, listen, you know, we need a training facility, you guys need federal money, and I think that should be investigated. And that's all I wanted to bring to your attention.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and the effort you put into it. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Next one you? Yes. Next speaker? No, we have to go? I guess not. No, come on up. I got you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Smith. I live on Mayflower Lane in Stoughton. Been there for 36 years now. Figuring I have some questions, and it might be my ignorance, but I'm trying to figure out how some of these thoughts affect the process. In the presentation, it was mentioned that the HQ, headquarters, is going to remain, and I'm trying to understand if that's part of our budget, because you're fixing it to some degree, so is that part of the $18 million or something?
My understanding, and they can comment that better, is that part of the budget that they have is to put money into the headquarters. Headquarters will no longer house fireworks. So, headquarters will only house administrative offices and whatever the public safety types of things that they need are going to be at the headquarters, and that's what they were trying to say on the presentation for the traffic, is it's actually going to take the fire engines out of the town center to help out with the traffic issues that are in town center, and only the two remote fire stations, Central Street, Prospect Street, are going to handle fire stations.
Do you want to comment on it? Does that affect the budget and all that? Sure. My inference here is that we're going from two buildings to three buildings, and all these things that you're talking about, and I heard in your presentation, you talked about dormitories at the headquarters, so that means additional upkeep affects our budget overall in the town of Stoughton, and I guess what I'm asking is, why didn't we incorporate all that in this new building, leaving ourselves with three buildings upkeep? Why wasn't that considered? Or if it was, you know, how does that affect the overall budget? Because all these people are going to pay for the bill on that. Sure.
Greg, all right. Dormitory architects, through the chair. The $18 million is the construction budget for the construction of the new building at Prospect Street. Freeman Street, which is an aside, is going to be the sort of crown jewel municipal front for the fire department. It's going to be restored. That's where the day-to-day business traffic goes. That is in the project budget as well. The three main parts of the budget, and I'm not the finance whiz, but there's the construction cost for Prospect Street, the construction costs associated with Freeman Street renovation, and then all the soft costs, the equipment that goes in the buildings, the design fees, the geotechnical examinations, all that. So, those two large portions are built into the budget that we're working in.
What's the budget? What's the total budget this time? 27.3 million? 27.3 million dollars, plus or minus?
31.
Does anybody know the answer?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I know at one time it was around 28 million. I just don't know what the... I know, it sounds like we're still in the same ballpark.
Oh, right. The owner's project manager, Taylor McDonald, pointed out that if you include the 6.2 or 6.4 million dollars of ARPA money, the total project budget...
ARPA money?
ARPA, the American Reinvestment.
Okay.
I don't know what that... what is it?
It was federal money that the town received. Now, it was a fantastic benefit that helped absorb some of the incredible escalation and construction costs in that, so kudos to the town for planning that.
So, what's the total budget? 33?
33.7.
So, the town's going to be responsible for 27 million?
That was the amount that was approved at town meeting, yes.
My qualities for not having the financial part square in the way tonight. I came to discuss all the design aspects really to the...
No, that's fine. We've got it open in more form for questions here, so.
Yeah, well, I guess so. I mean, it still begs the question, still begs the question that we now create, have three buildings, that when all this is said and done, that the town is going to have to upkeep three, not two buildings. And why wasn't this incorporated in this new building, so that there's less upkeep for the town and less that we have to be responsible for, citizens?
Greg, all right. Dormitory architects, the simple answer is it was cheaper to build this new operations-based fire station, right? No admin, no training rooms, no accoutrement, so to speak. That all goes to Freeman Street. It actually worked out to be more cost-effective to do that, to have, kind of keep the main, maintain that historic piece downtown, reuse it for offices, it's building stock the town already owns, and then put the operations up at Prospect Street. It ended up being the best that we could do with the budget we had.
For this one-time situation, not ongoing. I mean, you're addressing the building of this fire station, which I'm for a fire station. God knows we need it. What I'm saying is that you're only addressing the short term, not the long-term issue that everybody else has to address in the years to come, because we have to keep it to the sights.
I'd like to comment on that. This is... I'd like to comment on that. Um, this is, that went through town meeting and it went through several other meetings as far as how we got to this. There was also at least two committees that I know about that got to that point. I happened to sit for a very short period of time on one of the committees. I do know that the salvaging of the Freeman Street property was actually a very important part of many people in the town. Against even my own thoughts. I was pushing against not saving that for that. Um, so that has come up on many occasions and there's a lot of opinions about it. But it seems there's still a lot of people that are willing to put the money and the effort into the salvage of that building going forward. I, I do know that in the town. So that is a political thing that you, you may want to bring up, but it's, it should be brought up at town meeting. It's not really the privilege to get it brought up. But I, and I'm opening this meeting up just because people need to get it, but I, I am just letting you know that that's not our privilege.
I, I can clarify one last point about why two or three buildings versus all of the new stuff in one building. It's effectively six or a half dozen. We've got about thirty-two thousand square feet of program space the fire department needs. We could build all that new or we could build a smaller piece and save some money and use put the rest of that needed square feet in an existing building. So, right, we could have built, I think, Mr. Kelly, you may recall, the armory proposal was a thirty-two or thirty-four thousand square foot building that would have caused double this because of the masonry and the pitch roofs and the other aesthetic components to it that would give it that more traditional municipal speed.
And when this started, it was to avoid a proposition two and a half override. Some of these other towns you speak of have proposition two and a half overrides still to, to finance these elaborate, beautiful places.
I, I.
So that, that was part of, and this went to evolve to the, to the town um, for the assessments that we're all going to have to pay on our property taxes, which it passed at, you know, at, uh, in, in that election.
Go on. You can continue.
Um, some of my other questions, um, we mentioned improvements around there's a culvert that has to be reen- uh, improved and reinforced. Is that all part of this, this budget?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I noticed when in the presentation, um, you showed the traffic, we, we saw the fire engines going around what I could consider an obstacle course. Um, um, what about improvements to all those roads? Because what I thought I saw in that was a fire engine going at a relatively low speed, not the speed it would be going in if it was trying to get to a fire. And that obstacle course, um, it, it may seem like it's adequate now, but I, I just, there's been so many projects in our lives that we've been faced with where it seemed like it was okay now, but then later on we find out that well, that obstacle course isn't going to work, that improvements have to be made and that costs millions of dollars afterwards. And it's already seems like evidence in, in, in this video that you did.
I can't qualify, uh, how the fire department drives their trucks around various components in the town. Uh, the only piece I can answer concisely is that it's my understanding that the town isn't replacing the water main in Prospect Street virtually concurrent to this project. And I assume that when that's complete, the street gets repaved. Um, but in terms of how the department operates their trucks around various traffic conditions, uh, as well as the traffic conditions, there are other folks that can speak to that better than I can.
I'm ignorant about some of this. Do we, I think it's one hook and ladder, one of those. We don't have one. We don't need it because we don't have anything in height. That would qualify. Is that why?
We just stopped on to go with the ladder. Just, uh, it's, yeah, we don't have the.
I guess the yellow.
Sorry about that.
These are good questions.
I think it's a hard answer.
Good evening. Uh, Michael Carroll, fire chief. Uh, so the hook and ladder, uh, tiller, whatever, uh, multiple names. So that size apparatus, uh, where Stoughton doesn't have really many high-rises, we may have mid-rises, probably. Uh, our, what we call straight-stay on a ladder truck, um, is a hundred-foot ladder. And it's, it's about forty, forty-two feet long. Uh, this is the same piece of apparatus you see around. No, we don't, we do not have. And, and to speak to the, you know, the driving and the safety, uh, safety is, uh, especially safety of driving of apparatus or fire trucks is, is vital to get all these air constantly implemented, followed. Uh, when we approach the Senate, that's the obstacle course. Um, we have to stop at stop signs and then proceed through. Uh, same with red lights. We must stop. I mean, that's the law. And if we don't, and something happens, we're, we are at a halt. So we, we take our, uh, driving extremely serious. We have, you have to actually qualify to drive. You have to go through training for, you can't drive a piece of apparatus for a year and until you've completed all the, uh, criteria in place. So, uh, you know, I hope that answers your question. The, the people to the back, uh, the fire department, uh, they can attest how important driving, safety, you know, hitting your head on the road. We ride these, as you know, we ride these streets all the time. And seat belts have to be on and then on on the truck is, and alarm goes off that somebody's, uh, doesn't have their seat belt hooked in. So, um, yeah, some of this, some of the placement of this, uh, too, uh, some of the places that they came up originally when I came into this committee, they, you know, are running routes. Responses, response times are important with running routes. You know, they had us getting through schools, school, um, park, streets with parks like Care Street and, um, down Walnut during school time. They, they had them all over the place. So it was important to me, you know, we have running routes. Groups like Prospect Street, Park Street, we try to stay on those main roads, which we have to get off, but those were important too. So safety was a big concern, uh, of mine. And I know the rest of the committee members that are talking about it and the fire department that, uh, our running routes are, are, are built off where our children in town. So we do take that into account.
Okay. You might want to say that.
Sure.
Um, one, one of my other concerns, and I understand what you said before, um, about the traffic signal. But I'm concerned about these, all these stop signs. When the signal goes off and we all see it, we know to hold in place. A stop sign doesn't tell us that he's got a second or a third piece of equipment coming down the line that a normal citizen might look, but it's just a stop sign. They're going to continue to go. And I wanted to understand how adequate we really think this is. Because I think we're asking for accidents galore as people are trying to get to work or whatever, and there's just only a stop sign in the way. When that traffic signal goes off and that the fire department controls, that, that's absolute. Stop signs don't seem to be absolute. It almost appears that we're throwing little pains in some signs at this and saying, that's sufficient. Are you going to be able to exist with that or do you think we're asking for big problems?
Well, so I just want to answer this in a correct way. That, that's, uh, that's understandable to everybody. We, we have to qualify for emergency vehicle driver defensive training. As, as we approach a stop sign, we cannot, doesn't matter what the, the engine had gone through initially or, or the ship Manderskaya had gone through previously. It doesn't give the third piece of apparatus a green light to a stop sign. All apparatus has to approach, stop, and then proceed with caution. Some of the simulators that we used, uh, for our defensive driving, um, training, throws all that at us. You know, there's also, I think, a benefit of having the app, the apparatus, but with multiple firefighters in it because we have more eyes, you know, looking to your left and your right. The officer, you know, double checks to the right, shovel checks to the right. It's always looking to the right, a stray. The driver as well. We also have the jump seat personnel that will also have their eyes. We have our, we have our jump seats straight forward now. So they're seeing across windshield, in and out to the sides. Um, the apparatus, uh, also comes with, um, you know, English that is built into cameras, signals, anything on our side that we may not see past us. I mean, after we've passed. But to your point, we're dealing with it right now. We, we, not just we, they understand the sound. They know where we go for accidents. You know, we, they close their eyes and know exactly. As a matter of fact, when a call comes in, certain, certain intersections are like, oh, that could be bad. Right? So they run, they run and they understand this town so much. They understand that these, with, uh, blind spots on. I mean, I'm proud of what they do. Our, knock on wood, our biggest accidents are at Freeman Street. A, a building that was built for nineteen-twenty apparatus. And we're trying to squeeze, you know, new apparatus out of these bay doors that were just not built for that. So, you know, uh, I think the idea of stop signs is, is a simple one. We stop, you know, and then proceed with caution.
I'm worried about the rest of the world.
Well, and, and if somebody's moving, we'll walk. I mean, listen, uh, we'll still be responding with lights and sirens even at that stop sign. So if they continue to proceed through, I mean, obviously there's that, at some point you can't control everything. But even that, two, two vehicles stop and then proceeding is a lot less of an impact accident than if somebody was just to ignore the stop sign and blow through it and side spikes and leaves.
Last question I have, and, and forgive me, some of this, I, I had his hearsay. But I, I guess it starts with, I don't even know how many pieces of equipment we're trying to move over there. I, I understand that's eighty feet and I'm not sure if it fits there and whether it's extra room. But somebody said to me, um, that we eliminated the back doors like they have on Central Street. And it seems that most modern fire stations have that. And, and I assume they did that to cut the budget. And I don't know if every bay is being filled with all the equipments you have. Um, but I had heard that original plans, they talked about an extra bay for growth and that that was eliminated. So my question is, how, i- i- if we wanted to grow, if Stoughton keeps growing, um, is, is this going to be stifled almost from the beginning because there's no room here? Because we're trying to make a budget and that we're hurting us all from day one?
No. Um, so, uh, fire departments and the fire service respond from a static location. We don't control like the police would. Uh, we, we respond from a static location. Um, that's why the placement of, of fire stations are important. That's why we, we invest in the studies for response times and, and range running routes. With apparatus, the apparatus that are at Freeman Street now will be moving up here minus one ambulance. Now we are going to locate that ambulance down to the Central Street station, uh, where it should have been. You know, and, and to your point about drive-through bays or bays on both sides. Almost every fire station, almost every fire station I know, they have double bay, you know, double bays. They back, you know, they back the apparatus in and they use their reserves. So they don't use them as drive-through bays. This was important for us to build for the future. I don't know where Stoughton's going and I don't know where Stoughton's growing, but, and I'm, and I'm very careful about this. There's still the need that multiple studies since nineteen ninety-eight have done that we need a fire station on the east side of Stoughton. The next station may be North Stoughton. I don't know. And that, you know, and that will be years and years down the road. I can tell you, this builds a need to cover the responses that we need to make, you know, in town right now and for the future in that whole area. It was important when I came in to, you know, would I love to go to a new station? Absolutely. As, as the fire chief and, and, and the administration. But it was important financially to be responsible to the taxpayers so that it didn't only come out to sixty-four dollars a year. And try to build an oper- I said, we need an operational fire station. And the idea of Freeman Street, I do like the idea because I think it is an historical building. Not cla- I mean, not your classic definition, but yeah, it'll be a hundred years old in a couple of years. It was the crown jewel of New England when it was built, um, finding the actual blueprint. So there's a story part of it to bring that back, the facade to the, to its original. And, um, and then, yeah, the administration will be upstairs so that people who come from permitting from the buildings bottom, it's just a short walk over. It's not trying to find a parking space at Central Street and move around. So. And then downstairs, this town does not have an emergency operations center, which is required, AEM and FEMA, but we just don't have it. Because we'll feel that need. Uh, it's also going to be a, an important place. Hopefully it will bring some traffic down to, as far as foot traffic downtown. There's some of the, you know, restaurant shops. Maybe, maybe it can grow from there. But, um, you know, it was important that this gets an operational need for the future. And, uh, that, that, chief, thanks so much. No, thanks for the questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask the chief one question?
She'll go.
She'll be back.
Thanks, chief. Okay. Chief, remember to answer the question. A comment was made that the Freeman Street location is two-tenths of a mile from the mathematical best location. I'm sorry, Prospect. Thank you. I called it Prospect. Uh, where would that spot be? Those, that two-tenths of a mile?
So, so Mr. Terry, uh, what they do is they, when they do that perfect location, they pretend that there are no buildings that are, are houses in the town of Stoughton. And the computer comes up with like an actual location. I think it was like, uh.
Just a little north, up, up towards Walnut.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So up towards Walnut. I don't remember the exact like address or. But what it does is they do an actual, like, assuming that there's no buildings whatsoever in Stoughton, where would you put it? Um, I think it landed right on top of somebody's house. So, you know, that's kind of like.
That's right.
Is that correct? Yeah.
So it was backyard, basically.
Yeah.
Two-tenths of a mile.
I, I think, I think, uh, Glenn, the architect, it's in, uh, like, would, that's with Walnut Street, just north of.
So two-tenths of a mile in any direction is equal to what response time?
Or two-tenths of a mile?
Yeah.
Thousand feet.
Yeah, about a thousand feet. Uh, depending on, depending on, you know, pulling out of, pulling out of the center of a thousand feet is a lot longer than, you know, pulling out to, uh, a wide open area. Seconds. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let her.
You go.
She's got to go.
I gotta go. I, I'm a process, uh, twenty-five Christie Murphy Drive, um, the closest ladder to this proposed location. Um, I have two questions. One is a follow-up from the last meeting where I asked that there be a thought for, um, you to add a wall or barrier um, between my property and where the fire station would be. And I didn't hear any change. Can you comment on that?
Yes, happy to. You're correct that no wall or fence proposed. We opted, uh, I think there's a five and a half or six-foot break-in. So the parking lot at the, um, the near property. If you can imagine where the Legion building was, right? Um, and that sort of high area, that is, is going to get flattened. And the, the effect is along the edge of the property on your side, there's a, um, bit of a rise. And we've shown a pretty dense planting of, of evergreen trees instead of a wall or a fence. Um, it, it should combine with the, the trees on the site already and on your property. It seemed like an adequate buffer. And again, the cost being really the driving factor for most of this. Uh, but if it was a more, if, if it was, if the station or the parking lot was higher, for sure, we'd want to mitigate the loads and things like that.
I was more thinking from the safety perspective for, as I said before, I have kids, I have, they have friends, they come over, they play in the woods there. Um, and now that makes me more worried that it's like lower, so it's easier for them to get towards there if there's a property there. Um, and just for their safety, especially if a truck is coming out. It's just something I still request that we, we look at.
Thankfully, the parking lot is very low traffic. And you're, and, and part of the site design attempted to put the busier apparatus bay apron area as far away from your property as we could. It was actually originally designed to go the other way here. It was actually originally designed to go the other way here. Um, I think you'll find that the shifts change only once every twenty-four hours, eight or nine cars. Uh, I, I understand that kids can get into trouble anywhere. I'm a parent for sure. Um, and I'm, if the planning board would direct us or wants us to look at that, we're happy to.
I, I'm, excuse me, are you done? It is something we did actually talk about and it's something that I would like to see, um, some sort of fence. Normally, what we normally ask for is a white fence around any type of commercial project, especially up against, against a, um, residential area. This project may not warrant something like that, but I would think along the lines of a black chain link fence or something along those lines, that would be less of, um, less visual but more protective. Um, I think it's something that we, it should be, it needed to be looked at. But we did discuss it and I think it's something that's still, still on the table to be looked at, something to include. Nothing, nothing will be wrong with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The second thing was brought up actually before and it was, um, also I have a safety concern for, um, I run on that street as well, the Prospect Street, um, and I know for kids who are walking on that street, that sidewalk is a mess. Um, and it's really not safe for them. And in times, people walk on the, on the street because the sidewalk is in such disrepair. Um, so I just, I don't know how that gets incorporated into the project. But I do think that's a safety concern to really think about, um, when, you know, when having trucks going out on either direction on that street.
This has been brought now, so the street commissioners in the town are the board of selectmen. I know there's at least two members of the board here. If one of them wants to speak to that now or maybe something you need to bring up with the board of selectmen at a future time. Um, we do it, we do on certain projects to, um, push the street mitigation gets done. And that's normally done so that we can have projects help out the town to, to pay for street mitigation. Especially when there's, um, there's projects that are asking for special permits along those lines. And that's something that we normally do. Uh, where this is the town of Stoughton project, the town of Stoughton would have to be the ones to fund that. And the ones to fund that are us taxpayers going through, you know, the, the, um, way of doing that. This project right now, as far as I know, does not have in the budget to redo that road. But there is work being done, water line being upgraded along those lines. So I think then that would be the, the period of time to be able to do that. If the road's gonna get dug up, there's no sense in having this project pushed to get the road redone if it's gonna get dug up. Then the board of selectmen or the town needs to put together a plan to be able to deal with redoing that road. Doesn't need to be redone, yes. Us as a board, we can put it as a, you know, possible criteria and bring it up as a recommendation to the town. Um, that's something we, we as a board can discuss to have done. But we can't, we can't make that happen. Um, you know, it really does have to get done planned and then paid for by us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ready?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening to everybody. Peter Vanez, uh, forty-one Long Lake Court, Stoughton. Uh, town meeting wrapped in precinct two, which we're in precinct two. And I've spoken to this board that at first wanted to thank Mr. Kelly for the, last time I spoke, October twenty-seventh. He sent me a letter and he mentioned that I fully understand your concern about transparency and I believe we should maintain transparency. And I feel badly for the planning board because I asked about a public hearing for Prospect Street residents and people could talk about the issues that were, were brought up on the selection of this place. And I was told we, they don't have to have a public hearing. So now the public hearing now is in front of the planning board, not the board of select. But that's, that's besides the point. So I thank the firefighters. This whole, I've been working on this for a year. The reason I've worked on this for a year was the way that the non-transparent process that happened and we selected this location, okay? In the original town meeting book, December sixth, I made all kinds of notations. Every board has my documentation. That includes the select board, that includes the planning board, and that includes, uh, the, the conservation commission. I'm hoping that tonight, the conservation commission was able to vote on that in twenty-two minutes. They decided it, it went through. There was a lot of questions. Two of the members that have been longtime members said they reluctantly are voting for it and they explained to me that if you go before, uh, the, the state committee, that they're even less, less strict. So I, I bought that. Anyway, uh, as people know, I could go on for a long time. I promise I'll try not to, all right? I do thank the firefighters. We need a, we need a facility. We've been needing a new fire station for, for forty years. We made a huge mistake up on Central Street. We have potential to make the same mistake here, okay? Whether or not anyone wants to agree with that, Mr. uh, Mr. Gito on the October eighteenth meeting, and I encourage people to watch the October eighteenth meeting, if you can get it off smack, because it doesn't seem accessible now. And he made the point that Mr. McCrisky and I will be the first two select board members or selectmen to put fire stations into swamps. That is the quote. If you wanna watch it, it's October eighteenth, it's towards the end. Then we had another issue when we were told that we, we can't afford two million dollars for, for eight fifty park, which possibly should have been selected, but there was no process because the public wasn't informed. This is the first public meeting that they've had. I do agree, and I have some dates here. And I, I, I give a compliment right here. Excuse me. I said, thank you, Facebook. Okay, I'm not on Facebook. I'm seventy years old. I'm not on Facebook. But Face-, Facebook has now opened this up for comments. And I'm assuming that tonight, we will hopefully continue this because there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had, okay? Um, but here's some facts that I just wanna bring up so I won't take up too much more time, all right? We've all, we've had, we had the other committee that was disbanded, which was the public, uh, public safety committee. They, I talked to two of the former members and it was mentioned earlier that there was like somewhere twelve or thirteen locations. And I believe the chief responded, well, response times on all these locations because we've been fighting for a place to put a fire station for a long, long time, okay? And we still couldn't come up. He brought up to me on, on Veterans Day, the chief said, Fiano Drive. The, the school on the property, that was a political mess, okay? This whole thing has been kicking around. Uh, one of, one of McCrisky's, Mr. McCrisky's lines is, we kick the can down the road. And that's certainly what we've been doing on this. And if they expect you to take a vote in this tonight, I, 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 I'm shocked. Anyway, secondly, secondly, uh, I have a question, whether or not you folks in your pocket. Mrs. Richard, who lives at three ninety-eight Prospect, she, she went out to the owner who bought the property when he started construction with heavy equipment. She asked him, what do you, what do you think you're gonna do with this property? His answer was, it's either gonna be a horse farmer who's gonna build a house for his family. And I think Mr. Horsefall will, will probably verify that. And I know that he, he mentioned that to me, okay? So second, last thing, or it isn't the last thing, because I, I could go on for a long, the, the meetings, the meetings, and these are some facts. Mrs. Richard sent a letter to the planning board last, the first, last week. Did you guys get a letter from Mrs. Richard, three ninety-eight Prospect Street?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Carlin paid a visit. When she put a letter in, she didn't know the date, she didn't keep a copy. A year before, she put in a letter, her son brought it down, and Mr. Carlin came down and spoke to her. The week after that, he spoke to her in front of her house, the gate went up. No one knows what went on up there and, and no one obviously paid attention. Because everyone's in their little silo. You guys are in your silo, the conservation commission's in their silo. There's been no coordination through, through town leadership. And, and I spoke with the town manager today that maybe we can get some coordination and people can maybe talk to one another and just make some smart decisions to not cost taxpayers excessive money. The budget was brought up and, and, and it, it, I was told by the finance committee chair, Ron Anoki, that it's over three million dollars over and up. Okay, that's what he told me. I guess maybe he would know. The other thing was when the town meeting book came out on December sixth, that we were gonna, it was all virtual meetings. I don't know any person who looked through the hundred and seventy-two pages to find the information that they were gonna talk about. I don't believe anyone did. People were confused. We know we need a new fire station. I believe people voted. Yes, they, they put in four hundred Prospect Street. Yep, they did, they did put that in the article, no question, okay? But all of a sudden now, when you take the property by eminent domain, all the money we spent in that hundred and seventy-two pages that mentioned all the specifications that have been met, many of the issues are listed in that book. Eminent domain, all of a sudden, none of those apply. So it's just, uh, it's, it's just an absolute total mess. And that's why this board, uh, it is up, it's up to you to, to, I think, to reconsider and listen to more information, right? Here's, here's another fact, okay? And this is, this is from, I put, thank you, Facebook. I'm not on Facebook, but thank you, Facebook, okay? There's, there's all kinds of facts coming out on Facebook now. The, the, uh, on eight, on eight-three of twenty-one, that's August of twenty-one, there's a presentation that got sent to me today. And it's, and Dorian Whittier had a presentation that included eight fifty park. All of a sudden, the public never saw that. And if they say they had virtual meetings and people saw it.
No, that was, that was on smack. I, I saw it.
You saw it? Okay, okay. Then find out. I apologize for that. But how many people saw that? Right, well, that's the whole.
How many people come out and vote in the town?
That's, that's the whole point. But you, but, but the onus is on you folks right now to, to consider this, all right? Also, in September twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Vanez, let me just say something, please.
Yeah.
I, I said this at the beginning of this, the onus is not on us.
I understand that.
No, 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 we need to finish. Again, the onus is not on us to consider whether there's another site that's acceptable for, for the fire station. The onus is on us to look at the plans that we have for this project as is presented to us and whether the plans meet the criteria of the planning board site plan review. That was before us.
Okay.
Okay, just so we understand and we're clear.
That's fine.
The, the history of how it got here and how all that has gone is controversial. I understand fully. I was part of the board that was on it. I, but that's not really what's in front of us tonight.
I understand.
We're reaching out to you because you're the last course.
I, I, I fully.
Because we don't want anybody to sign anything tonight. We wanna talk some more.
Okay, I.
All of us.
That's the whole point.
I understand. Okay, but understand something. I have, I have certain purview. I've got this underneath door. Unless I can, unless I, as the board here, if the board decides it wants to hear all the things, all the testimony, that's the board, that's the board. I'm only one person on board. I'm just telling you what our purview is. I'm willing to listen to every single person here tonight. I just wanna let you know that that's the criteria. The criteria of the history and how this site got picked, we, we have no control over that. We can't comment on it.
Okay, that's fine.
That's true.
What can you tell us that we can do? That's what I'd like to know. What can we do as the taxpayer?
As the taxpayer.
What can we do?
Okay. As the taxpayer, right now, the only avenue for you to, to go about this would be to go before the board of selectmen. They're the ones that picked the site, they're the ones that approved it. Town meeting approved the site and approved the dollars that went into this. I really can't overrule town meeting. That's, that's the town meeting that voted to that. I didn't pick that. I didn't pick the site and I didn't pick, pick the money. I actually sat on a board, so, you know, for myself, I sat on one of the boards. I wasn't totally against this site, but I was, I was, I had a lot of comments about the site. I had a lot of comments about the building. I had a lot of comments about the budget. There's a, there's many, um, meetings out there that we had virtually that anybody could view. I'm not, I'm not telling anything. I'm very open about it, that my comments are all out there about this process and the way it went. That's where it is right now. What I, what's in front of us as a board, we have a limited purview of what we can look at. And I'm trying to stay within that because, like I said, I'm willing to sit here all night and listen to everybody, but I just wanna let you know what this board has a purview, okay?
I, and I understand the purview and, and the points I'm making are only the fact that there were no public hearings. If you, if you wanna consider virtual meetings that, that.
Okay, but the public hearings that we have are only for us.
No, I understand that. And that's, that's what's in front of you now. So all I'm doing is, I'm encouraging this board to, to hopefully not do what the conservation commission did and vote on something in twenty-two minutes. We've been here a long time and it's, it's up to you. You guys, you guys, if, if you're satisfied, if you're satisfied with what was presented, right, then I guess you could vote for it. And I think the taxpayers are, are willing to, to listen to other, uh, information that I'm not supposed to bring up. But I, I encourage you guys to maybe reconsider, look at it again, we've, we've pushed this, as Mr. McCrisky calls it, kicking the can down the road, okay? And, and maybe we should keep kicking that can. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond, my name was mentioned three times.
Mr. McCrisky, you do your point. Please, please, please.
No, you know what I am? I'm embarrassed to be here.
You should be embarrassed.
I'm embarrassed.
Oh, come on.
I'm embarrassed. Here's, here's the information. Now, did I say, did I say at any time I put a building on a swamp? I did not. That's not a, no, I did not. I did not, I did not say that. Mr. Gito, and it's in the minutes, made a comment that Mr. McCrisky and I are the only group who put a fire station on a swamp and we're gonna do it again. And I said right then and there, you do not reflect my views. I don't call it a swamp. There's a person that's told people that this is a swamp, okay? That person owns a piece of property that's ten feet off the wetland line with a building, okay? And this building is gonna be a hundred and ten feet, I believe, away from the wetlands, okay? So that's not a true comment. And when I made the statement of kicking the can down the road, I said, we have, okay, this, and you were correct, nineteen ninety-eight, we talked about a fire station. And it was all there after the death of Victor Melendi. And it all gave speed. And then there was a few people then that just came up with the mention that this meeting has been vetted. It's been vetted by FINCOM, by town meeting. There were two joint meetings of the select board at the high school where the fire department, the developers were there. It was advertised, it was on the town website, it was on cable TV, probably four different times, okay? We've gotta work at getting with the town manager, having a meeting, so that you get all the facts instead of what has been fed. Facebook is that game when we're a kid. It's starting with a comment. By the time it gets to the end of the line, it's due, it's in water. Okay, this has been vetted. And I've said this to Mr. Mr. Vanez, where he's approached my house with a letter to give me. And he's been here and he knows that these have been public hearings. It went to, you're smiling and I don't understand, okay? Because they have and they've been on the website, they've been advertised, they've been on TV, they've been live, he doesn't attend them. So we made up meetings minutes, right? Is that what you're saying? We made them up? We were at the meetings, folks. So I just want you to know, is this the perfect site? No, it's not. But it's buildable. It gives us a functioning fire station that the firemen need. We've been talking about this for years. Everybody says, I know we need a fire station. If we hadn't built the biggest building, we would have cost double the money. Now, what nobody's told you as well, when they talk about the previous building committee, do you know that they spent about three hundred and forty thousand dollars of young money with nothing to show for it? That's a fact. That's a fact. So what we did, the select board, we stood up and we said, we're not gonna continue this mess of a board of seventeen people that just blew three hundred and some odd thousand dollars, three thirty-four, I believe, that part about the area of a four hundred thousand dollar allotment for a feasibility study. And what do we have to show for it now? Nothing. The select board took the leadership. We trusted our K-town employees and our engineers. They put the plan together. We said, give us a funding source. We had a funding source. We went up, we applied for offered grants, got about a five million dollar grant that lowers it. And we built a realistic building. My question, the team is here. One of the gentlemen was on the phone call when I asked him, and he'll verify it, are the residents of Stoughton getting their value on the fire station in John Building? And the ans-, the answer was apathetically, no. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, that was the question. That's what we've done is we've, we've talked and talked and beat up. And I've said, we kick the can down the road so much because we wanna answer questions. And then you still have people that'll come back and tell you, this is a farce. It hasn't been made public. So when somebody mentions my name, it's not a swamp. The Central Street Fire Station is not a swamp. The Central Street Station has a high water table. The reason we had problems at the police station and the fire station on Central Street is because we didn't have a professional person running the project. We had two Stoughton residents and that's how we did things back then. If you knew somebody, you got to be the project manager and they were not qualified. The police station has residential grade windows, residential grade heating system. The, uh, the problem we had on Central Street Fire Station is we had a residential heating, air conditioner, and ventilation system. The building started to get mold because it wasn't extracting humidity. It had nothing to do with a swamp. So every time I hear that, I'm sorry, I get frustrated because it's just not true. It is, the engineers are here. It's gone through the conservation commission. They voted in favor. That was a public meeting, all right? So when, when Facebook gets going and I read it, I don't respond on Facebook, but I read it and it's just unfair because there's been a ton of negative, incorrect, and false information that's been spread. The rodent control, I've heard that as well. The, the problem's there. This program has mitigation. I believe it's a couple of years as well that we have to monitor that, all right? So if there's a problem. So if there's a problem there now, this is gonna solve it. This is all in the plan. You know, as the Select Board, if the roads become an issue, we can put an article before Town Meeting. But folks, right now, with our infrastructure, so this board of selectmen sat right here the other night and basically deferred all capital building projects for the next year because we just don't have the money. So we're trying to do the responsible thing. If we find the road needs issued, yes, we can get that done. We could put, you know, a, uh, an article before Town Meeting that says, "Do that." Sidewalks. We can put the sidewalks on the plan. The sidewalk list right now in Stoughton, believe you, there's people that want sidewalks everywhere. And we don't even have sidewalks to all of our schools. So we're trying to do that as well, is to do that. But if it's a safety issue, believe you, we're gonna address it. But I just, I, I want you to really listen as you go forward because there are some people involved in this, unfortunately. For some reason, they say they love the firefighters and thank you for everything you do, but they're coming up with just unfounded facts. When you say meetings weren't public, remember the finance committee right here that just sent a meeting, didn't you? Say it was vetted at the finance committee? All right? So these have been public meetings. If you didn't see them, and there's no, the only thing we can do is put this information out, okay?
Dr. Grimm pledged town hall meetings.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask. I, I, like I said, I'm willing to hear everybody, but I'm not gonna get into a, oh, I'm not gonna get into raising hands. Mr. McCrisky, this is my meeting, please, okay? And I've, I've given you your floor. Now, please, let's move on.
Okay, I, I will do that. Those meetings will take place. We're gonna, we're working on a meeting. Dr. Grimm's not here anymore. So we will have that. We'll have another meeting where you get the right information. Okay? Thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky.
Good evening, thank you. Ed Quigley, 256 Prospect Street. I've been here about the traffic issues. First of all, I want to say thank you because it's through this board that something has been done to, at least look at the traffic on, um, Prospect Street. This is the report, if anybody wants to read it.
Did you have Mike again, Ed? Stop coming on.
Okay. Ooh, sorry, I don't know how to set it up the right way. I don't consider Prospect Street to be a main road. It's less than a mile long. And I know in front of my house, it's not even twenty-five feet wide from one property to the opposite property. I don't consider that a main road. Um, as one of the gentlemen mentioned, and it isn't mentioned in this at all, but most of that road, there is a sidewalk, but there's no grime. There's a little strip of grass in the road. And even in the video, as the fire truck came out of the driveway, it wasn't on the road, it pulled off the road. So I'm assuming it was, it supervises, God could go first.
Did you have Mike again?
That could happen. Is this not working?
Yeah, you were.
Okay. So my concern, and I don't feel it's addressed in here, um, what I get through reading all of this, and I know you have nothing to do with it, maybe the selectmen kind of mentioned it, and maybe we can bring it up sometime in the future, is basically this study says Prospect Street is a very, very busy road. Most of the traffic does not apply by this speedway. Not the firefighters, and I can say that because they go by my house. They go by slower than most of the vehicular traffic that goes by my house. But the issue is, is basically, if, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, the report says, yes, the street is a tremendous amount of traffic, so adding the fire station really doesn't have that much of an impact. That might very well be true. That's not my issue. The issue is, it's not gonna get better. So what is going to be done about it? And I think that's the fault of the plan that the fire station doesn't just exist at four on Prospect Street. The business of the fire, it extends on the roads that feed into that. And what, what impact is it gonna have on those roads? And that question really hasn't been answered. So I'm not asking you to answer it. I'm just kind of putting it out there. Maybe the selectmen can point me in the right direction. Yeah, I know people said that there's a, um, you know, people voted against things the other day. But was it ever brought up when they were talking about the fire station? It would require some road improvements if we put it in this area? Because any thinking person reading through this would say, "Oh, they've gotta do something about the road as it exists." And I'm not talking about the fire station. I'm talking about the road. You people are the only avenue we had to kind of bring it up. I don't know why this isn't working.
Again, I'm, the road is an issue. I'm not gonna, and it, as a board, we, when we get through with all this, it will be, one of the discussions we have, we can't force the town to do it, but we can make it as a recommendation. The board of selectmen, all the road people that, that deal with, anything to do with the road, they're the road commissioners. All we can do is put it as a recommendation to the project that it should be incorporated to the project. From that point on, you know, we will discuss that. If the board feels that that's the situation, then that's what we'll, we'll put in spite of our recommendation.
Yeah, and I, I really do appreciate that. This report came from, this been brought up a meeting, and you asked, "Had there been a traffic study done?" And to that point, it didn't seem anything had been done. So I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you. And hopefully, you know, you can direct me, maybe Mr. McCrisky can direct me of how we can go about addressing this. I know it's not gonna happen overnight, but I think it really needs, for the safety and the well-being of the people that live in that area, needs to be considered.
And like I said, there's a process going on right now that we are, the town is gonna be upgrading the water lines in that street. So that process needs to play itself out because you don't wanna redo the street and then have to take it back up for a water line. So that, that process should work, and then the town should look at what the condition is at that point, to see what it does going forward. Again, it's gonna come down to money. We're all gonna pay for it eventually.
Everything comes down to money.
So, again.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Chip?
Good morning, Chris, no, I just say it loud. I just want to apologize to Mr. McCrisky, my comments. It was not him that said about the swamp. It was Mr. Gino. And I'm gonna publicly apologize to Mr. McCrisky.
Not you, thank you. Good guy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'm Paul Alabona, 247 Brown Bush.
Paul.
Heeman.
Okay.
Um, I said a few things. I, I don't even know how it even got this far. For one, I mean, what I saw on a lot of the maps, they didn't show what's there now, like bridle pools, the wetlands. I mean, that's a serious wetland. In fact, the conservation committee passed this. Stoughton, honestly, one misstep right now, they're opening themselves up to major lawsuits. I mean, this is honestly insane to me. I mean, everybody says, I mean, yeah. I, I want the fire department, I donate to them every year. So I think I can say what I want, or we love them, yeah. I donate to the fire pump every year. They should have a place, but that whole thing over there is a disaster. I mean, I, I really don't know how it got passed. I mean, I looked at developments and started on other places, and the conservation's like, "There's one little pool, and you can't build there." So I honestly don't know how they even got this far. So the whole thing doesn't make any sense. I know that's not part of this meeting, but yeah, this is crazy.
I can't comment on what the Conservation Commission...
And then budget-wise, like, they, they just went from twenty-six to thirty-three. I mean, they should know where they're at. I don't build a house and be like, "Oh, man, I'm like, sorry, I, I, we, we gotta go up about two million, I need windows." Like, you know, so I, I don't understand that either. I mean, you gotta have retaining walls, you got major water there. I mean, that's, you, you might as well be doing building on a soupette, I mean. Where are they going with all the creatures, the wetlands? I mean, all the bridle pools are a major thing. I mean, I can't believe they're laying that garbage. You can't build a bridle pool.
There's distances that they have to maintain from the bridle pool, which they have shown on their plans, that they're maintaining from those areas.
Supposedly, I looked into it, and I'm like, "It doesn't look right."
Okay, they've flagged the wetlands out there. My experience sitting on the Conservation Commission in town, which I have done prior to my, my time here on this board, is the Conservation Commission is very thorough as far as its review of the wetlands, the flagging the wetlands. Uh, Mr. Carlin is probably one of the most stickless people, and I'm a contractor myself, so I've seen it a lot in a lot of towns who can be sticklers about where the wetlands are or where they're at. Mr. Carlin is very, very precise as far as that goes. He's one of the few people I've actually seen go out there and dig his own holes and check for vegetation and those types of things. So I'm not gonna overstep his authority as far as where he believes the wetlands lines are on the hundred-foot buffers. I did not sit out on the conservation meetings for this hearing, so we can't comment on that. I just, I don't know where commenting it. It's been approved by them. I appreciate you bringing up your concern. Um, I don't know whether you're at their meetings, but maybe you should have been at their meeting.
Honestly, this is the first thing we were on. And again, like you said, the only time, only reason is somebody posted on Facebook, and I was like, "Holy crap, what's going on here?" So I mean, I think a lot of it, honestly, it was, that's why a lot of the neighbors are here because that's the first a lot of people heard of it, which is kind of insane to me, that this far along, and everybody's like, "Oh, the fire department going out back there, what's going on here?" Like, I mean, the safety concerns are there. I mean, like I said, there's a lot. As we go through the meetings, I mean, budget, things, just... I've heard, honestly, to me, it's just BS the whole time, like, people. So it does, doesn't make any sense.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Jim Curtin, 140 Swansea Terrace. I've been listening to everybody, and I appreciate everybody's comments. But it seems to come down, and I see, to two things. One thing is safety, they're worried about us driving on Prospect Street. We drive on Prospect Street all the time. Mario and Freddie doesn't work for the Stoughton Fire Department. I'm an officer, I'm in the front of the seat, I'm responsible for the truck. The other guy that's responsible for the truck, no matter what they're driving, is the guy who's actually driving it. God forbid something happens, it'll come back on him. They're worried about us turning on Prospect Street. Look at where we're coming out of now. Have you ever been in the center of town when that engine and lad are trying to take a right-hand turn to go to a, a firing down, right on the north side of town, or trying to take a left to go down the south side of town? And you're worried about Prospect Street. When I started twenty-six years ago, before I could drive that truck, I had to go off with the training captain, and I had to make a series of turns with that truck without hitting anything. And the worst one, and if nobody knows where it is, is Clifford and Avalon Street. Clifford and Avalon Street runs next to the Mingdo, and Clifford Ave runs right off the school street. Go take a Toyota Corolla and try and make that turn. And we do it with ladder trucks. It was one, one of my very first fires was Clifford Ave. We had three engines and two ladders on that street, and nothing got hit because everybody takes their time so that we don't hit anything. We worry about kids. We watch for them. We worry about joggers. We watch for them. And Prospect Street is not the hardest turn that we make, by far. When we're coming back from the hospital, we need fuel, we get on Prospect Street. The truck's running all the time. If you're on Pleasant Street and you gotta head over towards William Kelly, you're going down Prospect Street. Okay? We take our time. We worry about everybody. Last thing we want to do is set a kill somebody. The second thing that I, I hear is the budget and how much it's costing. Look at your inflation rates. It's not going down. Look at your interest rates. They aren't going down. The longer you wait to do this, the more expensive it gets. And then everybody sits there and goes, "Well, why wasn't it this much money?" Well, it wasn't this much money because we didn't start a year ago when we wanted to. I understand people talking about Station Two and where it was built and how it was built. You know why it was built that way? Because we had an out-of-town chief that didn't give a crap about the building he put there. All he cared about was putting it on his resume. "Look what I did, I got this town the second station they've been fighting for." He worked within the money, he didn't care about us. Those guys over there that care about us, they're not, they're not gonna build a piece of crap building. I don't need brick, I don't need facades, I don't need a tie for harm. I need a building that works. I need a building that keeps us safe, that keeps the men, the men and women behind me safe. There's a lot of stuff right now, you see it in the news, PFAS and everything else, they're in our gear. We need to get out of our gear because firefighters are dying of cancer. You want an expense? Go to the town and ask them how much they spent on Freddie Little that died of cancer. Probably from his gear. Okay? Please, I, I'm asking you. The longer you wait, the worse it gets. So I, I'm asking you to approve this tonight. Thank you.
Come on up. Greg, Greg Polcraca, 318 Prospect Street. Uh, I want to thank the board, um, for holding this meeting tonight. And I know you're getting a lot of feedback, which in all reality, should have happened almost two years ago. There was a meeting in September of the Select Board, of September of two thousand and one, where the former town manager pledged town hall-style meetings with the public because of the size and scope and importance of this project. Chief Carroll spoke at that meeting, and Chief Carroll agreed with that. And so when we say there weren't public meetings, we are referring to the fact that there were not meetings where the public, like tonight, could stand up and speak uh, their thoughts on this project, thoughts, concerns, and everything. That should have happened before this site was chosen That should have happened before this site was chosen, because there were multiple sites that were considered. And it would have been really great to have those meetings before this site was chosen, because now we're, we're looking at this site, which sits in the middle of a wetland. It is not high and dry as it's been described, and all of us who live in that area know this very well. What some people might not know, but I'll bring this up because I brought it up to the Conservation Committee at their meeting, this land was illegally filled in in 1989. And so the land that this building is going to be sitting on was illegally filled in. There was a cease and desist order from the town of Stoughton for this site, and they were required to remove the fill from that, which never happened. So we are, we are putting this site on a backfilled wetland. I won't use the word swamp because it doesn't sound so nice. It's a wetland, right? And so, yes, are there concerns? I have many concerns, and I'm here to voice them tonight because I haven't been given the opportunity in any other venue. I've been to Select Board meetings, Peter's been to Select Board meetings, he's asked for this opportunity, which you get to hear tonight, to hear about those concerns. So environmental concerns, absolutely, that's number one. Budget, we've all talked about that, we won't even need, we don't need to go into that. The neighborhood concerns on safety, this, you know, people having an emergency center right in the woods behind their house in a residential area. There's people that have lived there, I've lived there twenty years, there's people that have lived there fifty or more years, there's people that have lived there all their lives. So I want to thank the residents of Stoughton who are here at this meeting tonight, because that's what we need, actually. We need more participation in the town, more participation in the meetings. I became a town meeting manager, do you know why? Because Robin Graham told me they were putting a fire station in the woods behind my house. And I realized there's so many meetings that are going on, some well-publicized. I'm not quite sure why they put the important meetings in like a brain tree newspaper instead of the former Penny Saver or the new one that's replaced it, of course. So I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of concerns, and I do have a technical question. So what is the distance from those garage doors to Prospect Streets on the driveway?
Give or take a foot, eight-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Eight-hundred-and-fifty feet, so with a mile being five-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty feet, we're talking at well over a tenth of a mile.
I trust you, Matt, I gave you my response.
So five-hundred-and-twenty-eight feet, so getting close to two-tenths of a mile from the street. So I asked the board, will you consider this plan? Because your focus, as you mentioned, is the project and the site and the location from how it affects the surrounding areas. I wonder why, I wonder why the fire, the fire chief and all those involved in this would want a place that's, you know, one-point-five to two-tenths of a mile from the street, right? That's response time. And you see Sharon sits right on the main road, eight-fifty Park Street that was considered sits right on the main road. I mean, why wouldn't we want a flat, wide-open, easy access to Route 27 location? I don't know. I don't know. So as you're considering this plan, and as you're considering the location, and as you're considering the effect on the neighboring community, I hope you can ask enough questions to get you all the answers you need before making a decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your effort.
Thank you. Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. I was former Finance Committee and former Library Building Committee, and I'm only speaking because Mr. Chriskey pointed to me, because we talked about that the Finance Committee did have public hearings. I can't speak at all to Dr. Graham or any of that, but the article that was presented for the, I believe it was the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, had the fire article in it. There were public hearings. That article was approved at town meeting for 27.3, and I keep hearing we're over budget, we can't be. That article was approved for $27 million, $300,000, and this town cannot spend one penny more than that. That's just how it works.
Is it 27.3?
Yes. So we can't spend one penny more than that. So if something were to go over, say the cost of construction went up, then somewhere else in the article would have to be trimmed. I don't remember the budget, honestly, my brain doesn't go there anymore, but I know there's contingency built in. So I just think it's not accurate to say that it's $3 million over budget. Yes, the costs may have increased for some of the estimates, but the article cannot spend one penny more than 27 million three. And I just want everybody to be assured of that, there's no way this can turn into a $35 million project on the backs of the taxpayers.
I think, I think what, what happened was the confusion came down to being, which I didn't even realize, we had a $5 million grant, federal grant that added to that 27 million. So the entire project cost, what people were saying is 32 or 33 million. So that's, I think that's where the confusion came in. Not that we're spending more than the 27 million approved by the town, but there is an additional $5 million that is being spent, that, you know, whether it's town of Stoughton taxpayer money, or it's federal government taxpayer money, that money still came out of my pocket.
Right, I'm just saying that, just to be clear, it can't come out of
The town of Stoughton.
The tax levy or anything like that. And the only other thing I was going to add, and I think I just forgot, I feel so badly that everybody's here wanting to discuss the location, but this is just my experience, and I may be completely wrong, but the article was approved and it included 400 Prospect Street in it. The debt exclusion was approved and it included 400 Prospect Street in it. So it's not a case of trying to convince someone to change the location and you get to keep the money. I think you'd have to rescind the entire article, pay back what we've already spent, and start over. So I just feel really badly, because I think a lot of people have misconceptions in terms of how things work, in terms of the articles and how the money is spent, but
That's why, that's why I've tried to bring up that this, we can't focus really on that. That's not really where our purview was, I did try to bring up really on that.
And I just, as the former FinCEN Library Building Committee, I just want people to understand that. Like I said, I'm not involved at all in the location or anything like that, but I just want people to understand realistically what can and can't be done.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Can I add to that very quickly? Taylor McDonald, I'm the owner's project manager of Palmeri Associates. There's just a couple different numbers being thrown around, so I just wanted to make what is clear. 27.3 was approved at town meeting. The R, the fund that we're getting from the federal government, the ARCA fund, is 6.4 million. The total budget is 33.7 million. Now, the project has been estimated, it was estimated pre-schematic, it was estimated during schematic design, design development, and construction documents. And we are still within that 33.7 million. There's no possible way we could be over budgeted this time, because we haven't even got bids in yet. Project's out to bid right now, so we'll know what happens when the bids come in, but we're not over budget. Thanks.
Thank you.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two, 60 Peters Drive, town meeting representative. First of all, thank you for giving us this time, this opportunity to listen to us, and I realize that you were actually boxed in here to approve it for site plan. Just for clarification, I did look up the article that you asked on December 6th, 2021, Article One, and in the original article, it stated Prospect Street, it did not do a number. I'm sure if I went further in, but I'm just, one other comment about that. Finance Committee, the vote to approve this article failed, two, twelve, two, two, twelve, to one. It says the committee supports the project. Concept, it has concerns about the property, funding, investments are building on multiple projects, building multiple projects into this article. So if anybody had more concerns, they can go back to that, they can get that warrant on the town webpage.
Thank you very much.
But, here's my concerns, technical question, you're not going to get off that easy. My concern was, we saw the nice photo demonstration of the fire truck going down the road, and again, someone mentioned about what time it was taken. It looked like it was early morning, we can tell by the shadows of the fire truck. Is there a time on that?
It was about 10 o'clock on a Friday morning.
A Friday morning?
Absolutely, yeah.
Was it good Friday?
I know it's last Friday. It's taken a week ago.
So one of my concerns about the length of that fire truck, I'm guessing was about 35 feet long?
Roughly.
What?
Roughly.
All right, so you didn't have, have your big ladder out there, which is what, 44 feet long?
No, well, it's just on
Okay, so that's, so you had another 10 feet or so to that
No, not another 10. It's not 10 feet. The ladder truck isn't 10 feet longer than the engine.
All right. I think that if, if that was done with the ladder truck, would have been more representative of the turns making those. But my concern is traffic lights coming out of that fire station going on to Park Street, and you said that that's not within your control.
No, no, what I, what I said was, it is within our control if a warrant allows, the state has certain criteria to set up a traffic light for that to happen, we don't meet the criteria. What they have done to mitigate that is they are putting a mast on across Prospect Street that will have lights, warning lights on it, that trucks will be coming out or coming in from Prospect Street at that drive. So those warning lights will be able to be seen at a good distance down Prospect Street either direction. That's what's been, that's what's part of the plan, the way to set up right now, that's part of what they showed us in the traffic, on the traffic report earlier.
So it'd be one colored light?
No, no, it's a black, yellow, and red light, if I remember correctly, it was on a triangular type of setup, that's going to be on a mast on going across Prospect Street.
Would that stop traffic?
Yes, it does stop traffic. It's red lights to stop traffic so the trucks can get out on to Park Street, but it's not a type of light that would work on a constant basis, it only works when the trucks are going to be leaving, or when they're going to be coming
It's similar to a train.
Similar to what?
Similar to a train crossing. Okay, all right.
FM transmitter.
So what I'm looking at, you said about getting a light on to Park, Park Street. Akia Way, they put a light on Turnpike Street on Akia Way when they came to town. I'm not sure who demanded that from the, from Akia, but that was one of the mitigations for them to come into town. Also, Duncan Donuts put a light on Turnpike Street down on 139, which is a state road, you know, so people can come out of there. You also have the Walnut Street and Park Street right out here, there's a light there on 27. Time to put a light in when it comes out of, they put a light in down their intersection down on, I think it's Turnpike Street down there.
It is Turnpike Street. I still don't know what I can actually comment on, because I would know people that built that, and that did, it did hit a warrant to be able to hit that, that light.
Right, but I'm saying
But what I'm saying is this criteria, this state criteria for stoplights and red lights and green lights to be able to put in, be able to put into intersections. That criteria was set by the amount of traffic, and there's, there's several, but traffic is one of them going through the intersection that says a traffic light can be put here or can't be put here. And if you don't meet that criteria, the state says you can't put the traffic light. If you put it in, then you're putting it in at your own risk, and it becomes, it causes a liability on the town to be able to force that in.
So we'll wait till there's a few accidents, then we'll put a light in?
I can't comment on that.
And I'm going to let you off.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Eric Stadlman, 229 Bramblewood Road. Thank you all. Immortal shy, so I'm not great at public speaking. I do have some questions, I'm not sure if they're within your purview or not, based on what I've heard tonight.
Sure.
So hopefully I don't offend anyone. I'm a little curious about the timing of construction and when that may start, and you know, what level the documents are at.
So the project is out to bid right now. Actually, the demolition portion of the project will be done in the next week or two. The project is out to bid, we'll receive our filed sub-bids on February 22nd, our general bids will be due on March 8th, and you know, hopefully with contracts, mobilization, the contract will start about 30 days after that.
And what level, and what edition was the, what code edition did you design the building The current code. The ninth edition? Yeah. Okay. And you'll start We're in a transition year right now, so Yeah, that's where I'm going, start construction before the tenth edition. And you said you're out there doing demolition right now? Correct. Is there a slip in place?
For the demolition, no, but there will be one in place for the, the actual
So you're out moving earth right now, or no?
No, they're building, they're bringing the building down, taking the foundations and leaving it as is.
Also, on the presentation, and maybe this was part of previous presentations that I wasn't a part of, what sustainability features are you including in the overall design and in the building? Pre-question, I'd love to talk about that all night, but I know that's not our purview. I'm confused about what the purview is.
No, that actually, that actually can come under our purview.
Okay, well, sure, it's, it's not designed to, it's a stretch energy code, actually about 10% over, so it exceeds the current state building code, which you sound familiar with. The roof is designed to have 15% greater structural load than code requires, and that's to allow for rooftop multi-rotary race. It's got a mix of variable refrigerant flow heating and cooling systems with a small hydraulic heating plant for both the really cold days to help make up some of the difference, and also for, it's an ad alternate in the project, which means if the bids come in acceptable, we'll take the first ad and only ad alternate is gradient slab heat in the big apparatus base.
It's not designed to lead
No, it's not a lead project. It's roughly silver, though, without the plaque. Some other things that I saw in the presentation, I was curious about the striping on Prospect and Walnut seemed to be a pretty big deal, and it was noted that there's 0.73% accidents, which is higher than the average, it sounded like. That's, that to me seemed somewhat of a distraction, because I don't, I'm not sure why we wouldn't spend money on striping now regardless of whether the fire truck station is going in or not. And I think we lost sight of the fact that there aren't any sidewalks on Prospect on the same side that the fire station's going. Also, there's been a lot of comments about the fire truck drilling footage. I'm not sure why we wouldn't have an engineered stamped truck turning radius study done and performed. That would take away all of the back and forth and negotiations and any concept of it works or doesn't work. There are actual studies that can be done by civil engineers that support that.
Hi, John Diaz, GPI. If I can go back.
Oh, we're just dying. Use the arrows, left, right, go.
So we did do turning templates right here. You can see across it, Park, that's the fire truck vehicle making the right turn with two passenger car vehicles stacked there, all those inside of AutoCAD turn truck templates for the fire vehicle apparatus through all the intersections.
So we'll get engineered stamped ones?
I can stamp those.
What truck study was that based on?
That was a fire truck, a standard fire truck, about a 45-foot fire truck.
Also, looking at this plan here, I would understand that if a commercial developer would come in and propose something like this, that infrastructure upgrades would be made on the street and around the area. As I look at Prospect Street and Park Street with those two crosslots, I'm not sure what the purpose of those crosslots are. They go nowhere, and I think there's opportunity, as we talk about safety, to add crosslots, knowing that we're going to have additional truck, traffic going around there, crosslots in an island to help support pedestrians. The connectivity within Stone, I understand there's a big project going on on Central Street right now. And then I was just curious about operationally, I'm not sure, I can't speak or state that where that building is going, if it's a wetland or not. I'm just not sure, or I've heard there's a culvert there that's been under some scrutiny. I'd just like to understand what the salting and fertilizing operations will be throughout the process of owning a building and managing a building of that size in that area. And then lastly, I had a question about noise mitigation, not only from trucks driving and sirens around the residential area, but also the mechanical equipment that would be required to support the building among the residents. So I didn't know if there was noise mitigation studies performed to support this in the middle of the residential neighborhood.
The noise mitigation, we've only really discussed in previous meetings, I'm not sure if you can hear me, dealing with the sirens and how that would, that process would work, we did not get any noise mitigation from the trucks or from the maintenance vehicles. I'm not sure what that's been brought up as far as any of your planning goes at this point in time.
No, we've been asked to do a, a study for the property line sound change, for what it's worth, the VRF, the variable refrigerant flow units, and the small dedicated outdoor air supply fan units are much smaller than I think the typical rooftop unit.
Where are they going?
On the roof.
I didn't, in the plan that you showed, at least the elevation you showed here, and I'll look again, I didn't see them on the roof, oh, sorry, the elevation.
That's correct, they're not showing in the renderings.
Okay, so one of the requirements that we do have, and is that any rooftop equipment is shielded from the street view? equipment is shielded, is shielded from the street view in any distances? So one of the renderings that must come up if it is on the roof is showing us where that rooftop equipment is and showing how it's gonna be shielded, whether that's by car bits or some other faction to be able to deal with that going around the building. That's from all sides of the building also.
From Prospect Street or from on the site?
From on the site. Actually from the site, so that's where it actually is. It's not just from Prospect.
Right.
But it's from, you know, the distances, so coming up toward or at the site, so we need to be able to see that up the distance. Neighborhood views, if anybody, you know, you had a neighbor here, I'm not sure if you still have, from curb view, one of the things I was gonna bring up, but I haven't just gotten into it, so I'm just writing notes, is what's going on with the neighborhood notes, one more question coming up. I'm gonna try to let everybody talk, so I can meet this off. I find my notes are the kind of, as we go.
Got it.
Go ahead, I just had a question. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Do anybody else that would like to speak this evening? Come on, Chad Goldau, when he keeps awaiting. Come on.
One clarification, in, in the architectural elevations, they are shown, not the renderings, but in the actual.
I'll read through that.
Okay, sorry.
My name is Bill Brophy and I didn't plan to come here, nor did I plan to speak, but Peter Maness was nice enough to let me know there was a little conference taking place tonight that probably hadn't taken place since infancy of this project. My problem is I don't hear anything about a traffic study. Is there an in-depth study? I haven't, wasn't told there was one.
That was with the gentleman.
Somebody told me it was a visual.
No, somebody, I mean, so I can see that report, that, that, the person that stood up.
I don't hear that one, so you gotta speak up.
Sorry. So the person that stood up here early, who was just up here, he was on a, did, GPI, did the traffic study. That's what this book is gonna do.
Anything in that traffic study make a reference to Prospect and Walnut?
Yes.
What are they gonna do? Are they just stop signs?
Presently, that's the proposal, is put stop signs and crosswalks in that area.
You're gonna have four-way stop sign? Are there gonna be blinking lights like they are there now?
We're not changing the blinking lights at that area. Same, same, yeah. It's the same. It's existing, what's gonna stay is existing.
They're gonna keep the blinking lights?
Yes.
I live at Prospect and Walnut and anybody can defy me to tell me that that's not an active corner from seven in the morning to nine thirty and from two thirty or three o'clock to six o'clock is out of their mind. I've had cars go into my garage, it's a two-car garage, sometimes it's three and four. I had a guy cut through my lawn. I've had people come over the hill on Walnut Street coming from Lincoln Street, excuse me, don't even stop, the car in front of them stops and they go. I've seen kids, even myself, almost get whacked up there. I'm in favor of the project, hundred percent. I don't care what they do on Prospect Street, but that corner is deadly. And someone's gonna get killed, I think maybe many years ago somebody did. I don't want it to happen, they say we'll fix it now. And that's, we usually have it. We'll take care of it.
The proposal presently is.
Can you speak up a little bit again?
The proposal presently is to leave the lights the way that they are, the blinking lights, to add stop signs on all four corners, I believe, and to add crosswalks into that area. So that all four act, all four, all four corners of the intersection are active and be stopped.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm looking at that stop sign up here, Prospect and Park Street. Is this the scale, this plan?
No.
That, that thing, that thing is deeper and wider than Prospect Street.
It's not, it's not the scale, it's just to show you.
Huh?
It's not the scale, it's just to show you.
It doesn't, it doesn't do what it's supposed to do. They got a stop sign, but where is it? Is that the size in, in scale?
I'm sorry, I get out the poll exactly. No, no, that is not, the sign itself is not to scale. The, the plans aren't to scale. The stop sign is, this post itself is on the sidewalk.
If I were to look at it, I would think that's what you guys are presenting. Wouldn't you?
No, I wouldn't. I would think that's, I, I would, I would think that's a big graphic so you can see there's a stop sign there.
And it's what?
I think it's a representation of a stop sign.
What's on the ground, is that a crosswalk?
Yes.
That's close, but the stop sign is a whole hell of a lot bigger than the crosswalk.
If I had put, if I had put the stop sign the size of this stop sign, you wouldn't see it.
We'd get nowhere. But I don't know what they're gonna do at Prospect and Walnut because it's really a hazard.
Unrelated to this project, Mr. Brophy, there was an article at the special town meeting, there's actually gonna be a speed hump put in around where the Jones School is. I know that's on the opposite end, but that's gonna slow traffic on Walnut, on Walnut Street.
What?
A spee, a speed hump, they call it, a speed bump. It's gonna be, uh, right around Pierce, right around Pierce Street.
You're gonna put a speed bump?
Yeah, that's, it has nothing to do with this project.
Okay.
It was an article in town meeting.
Okay, I'm not aware.
Mine can address it more in detail.
How you doing?
I can address the Walnut Street project. So there's a group of residents for years have been complaining about the issues on Walnut Street. You may have been one of them. Uh, in our last, our last special town meeting, we actually presented an article for two hundred fifty thousand dollars to improve Walnut Street to slow vehicles down. There's a number of items that are going to be proposed. Uh, first of all, there's gonna be restriping from Prospect Street all the way to Park Street, uh, new striping all the way down. Uh, they're gonna be having the speed feedback signs, uh, to slow people down. There'll be a speed hump also to slow people down. There'll also be an actual bump out where the crosswalk's gonna be, that's gonna be reconstructed.
On which street?
Right near the Jones School, right near Pierce Street, right with that.
What's that gonna benefit up Prospect and Walnut?
Cars are gonna have to slow down going up Walnut Street.
I've been sitting for forty years.
Okay, well, we're doing other.
I don't know it better than you do, or than one of you guys.
Well, we are professionals.
You remember what, but you're on Facebook.
Well, speed humps, I think, do slow cars down, in my opinion.
Why can't you put like a, a blinking light before the blinking light? Now by, um, can't think of the street. Walnut, Prospect Street, on both sides of them going down the street, prepare to stop because they don't pay attention to the stop sign and they don't look at the overhead red light. The red light demands a can. For everybody's safety, I could be one of you folks in the room, and I've seen people get walnut there. I can't be emphatic, any more emphatic about that. The station, fine. The road, leave the road the way it is, looks like a country road, it's pretty well torn up. Maybe it'll slow people down. They're gonna do something. I didn't, I didn't come here to talk, but the more I heard about it, the more I understood it, the more I was, am. So if I was in your seat tonight, I vote for the project with those stipulations. Thank you. I'm sorry, Chad. Who's this? Next.
I'm like running water.
Good evening, Tom White, thirty seven Tamarack Drive in Stoughton. Um, I don't know what's the purpose of this board. Many of us who are entangled with estates or in that, that group of housing there, uh, one of the biggest concerns for us is how this affects our property value, the infestation of rodents and deer and other animals that are already present in the neighborhood because that is conservation land. With this construction project, our biggest concern is all of that is coming somewhere because you're digging up the ground, you're doing all these moves, all of this is gonna go somewhere. So is there any level of consideration or, um, process to deal with the fact that we're gonna be with an influx of rodents, infestation, animals, coyote and all the other things that seem to pour out of these, um, these forestations?
Yep. I could speak to the lobes, the rats specifically. We've already had for weeks on the site extensive rodent control measures. I wish our, our scientist that was at COSCO was here with us tonight, he could answer specifically about species needed to the site. Uh, you use the term conservation, though. I don't believe that land has any kind of conservation designation, so, yeah, it's, if we could go there now, I think you would maybe see it's, it's, it's pretty blasted. The previous owner did a good job digging it up and making a bit of a mess. But I, I can't speak directly about deer, I know we have a certain amount of wilderness person, but rodents, we're very sensitive to. It's, it's in the long-term construction and post-construction, maybe it's in the place.
And then to the same issue, um, regarding property values, because, you know, I've been here for about ten, maybe eleven years, not as long as, uh, some of the other people in this room. Um, but my concern is, you know, my property's right there, um, one of our neighbors is directly letting this and all of us are in this little queue. How is this going to impact our property value with both noise level, construction change, process change for the area? I mean, just the reality of it, um, I've had to put in super sun pumps in the basement for changes of water levels to the back of my house that abuts the other side of that, um, the, the actual conservation land, I guess, that's on the other side of my house. My concern is with all these changes, things have to go somewhere and how are we mitigating that issue? That's, that's my concern at this point.
The, as far as the conservation land, like I said, we probably commented on that, the Conservation Commission brought that up and they, they've dealt, the, the project deems to meet all the requirements for con, for, for conservation in the town of Stoughton and state conservation laws. As far as onsite drainage and the, how much water is leaving the site, that does become under our purview, that's part of, um, what the engineering department views and the requirements for that within the state is that what is leaving the project now cannot increase when the project is completed. So what they have to prove to the town as far as the infrastructure that they're putting in would be that they're retaining the water on the site at the same level that the site is now and whatever leaves is no more than what's there now. And I believe, what I've heard is it's actually increasing, improving from what's there. So what's leaving the site right now is, is gonna be more, is gonna be more than what's gonna be leaving the site post-construction. So that water should not, you know, that shouldn't impact you. I, I did not run the calculations, I have not reviewed the plans in depth, I'm relying on the engineers that have, but that's what I've been told and that's what, that's the reliant, I didn't take that.
Okay. And, and just again, the project is already started?
Yes, yes.
And we're in the early stages of construction, we're not actually digging into the ground yet?
We haven't started any actual construction, it's just demolition of the American Legion Building that's.
Okay, do you have an idea when you're gonna start the actual construction and the digging of the ground?
Probably April.
Okay, good. And, and the reason why I ask this is because obviously that impact is gonna have some level of, so when we have, I don't know if there's gonna be further conversations about this process that's happening, but somewhere around that mid-April timeframe, if we're in an influx of mice and things of that nature, is there anything that's gonna be done concerning that for the homeowners who have to deal with this new problem?
My, my understanding is there's a plan in place as far as the construction goes, that they have been monitoring the rodents for, I think it was two-year basis, you said?
Will there be any assistance for the neighbors who are living around this property that are gonna have that impact?
What do you mean by assistance?
So what I'm saying is, for example, um, for the, um, I think the person who will directly invest the property, um, when this happens, she's obviously going to receive some level of impact. How is she going to be served while this is happening? Because while they may deal with the property itself and deal with their own issue, when you can't get, when, when an animal can't get a food source from one location, they can't get another location. So my concern is, my concern is that the, the movement will come to everybody else's home, which will affect our values for our property. That's my, that's my heartfelt concern.
I can't speak to that. I, I, that's not my, uh, not my expertise, I don't know, everybody else can speak to it.
I can only speak to it from a, a, a specification and fact base that, you know, there's, we put, traps were put out before they started any of the demolition. They were, they were there roughly three weeks before they touched the building at all. So that's done on purpose so that they can bait the animals, so they go and die and, and bring the, the poison back to the den. Um, so that was done prior to any demolition. The traps are still out there now, um, around the building where they're demolishing the building. And then, um, when the new contractor comes in to build the building, he's responsible to do the same thing, set traps up, um, and then during the entire span of construction, he's gonna have traps out, um, and he ha, he owns pest control. And then, and that continues on, um, in the, in the owner, owner, so as far as what goes where, I, I, I don't know how we can be responsible for, for tracking beyond that. I think we're doing our due diligence as best we can for construction. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Does anybody else want to comment tonight?
Private question.
I have one other person coming, so, come on. Yes.
Do I have to press anything?
No.
Hi, my name's Joanne O'Reilly.
Five six, three, five, six Prospect Street, Joanne O'Reilly. And I'm concerned about, um, everyone ever's, everyone's talking about traffic lights in, but what about the lighting, the actual, of the actual area? Is that included in the project? The lighting and.
It is.
The big, um, like parking lights that, okay, so that's.
She's gonna, she's gonna comment. Great question. Uh, we're very sensitive to that, as is the planning board. Part of the submission is all the information about the site lighting, the fixture cut sheets, the specifications, the cutoff, the dark sky compliance, energy information. That is all the very carefully thought.
And light, light pollution is in that calculation too? The, the sun is out over your house at night.
Because, you know, that's my backyard and I'm like thinking I'm gonna be looking out like it will never get dark. I hope we're gonna think of something funny in this stressful conversation. But, um, also, I also, um, am thinking about, this is more of a seasonal question for snow because once, you know, like, um, I've, I've brought this up before, but when, that's a long distance to plow and that's a big area that they, that to plow, I, like, um, where they are up in, um, where they are located now is probably not as much of plowing, but that's a big, even just to get down to the building. So is that gonna be thought of? It's a seasonal question, but, um, because that snow is gonna have to go somewhere and it's gonna be pushed aside and it's, it's gonna go into the, it is wind up going into the water. And I'm really concerned about making sure that they utilize some, the proper, not rock salt, I don't know what they call it, but the proper way to like, to poison that water for the animals that are living there. There's a lot of deer, like the gentleman would say, we have our deer in our backyard, a lot of different, um, plus the rodents, we took care of that, but hopefully it doesn't erupt again, so, but thank you. Yeah.
Snow management and water quality on the runoff, based on the DAS materials. If I'm understanding the questions correctly, uh, simply compared to Freeman Street, to your point, um, there's plenty of room to move and store the snow on the site. Any of the runoff on any of the developed areas is captured in stormwater management systems to separate out all that stuff before it's discharged into the surrounding bodies of water. Unlike the current situation now where it's forty or so thousand square feet of impervious area that is untreated, running into the stream, grease, oil, sand, salt. We're controlling all that.
Yeah, because that was my concern, because there's, there's an awful lot of wildlife in our backyard and I don't want that to be, I wanna hopefully maintain that, it's very, except the rats, it'll, if I don't get, I'm not so, overly concerned, well, yeah, concerned, but thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. Come on.
We're good until twelve, right?
No, ten thirty.
I just wanted to, um, ask a few more questions, um, because I'm a little confused. So I don't have Facebook. I came down here tonight because of word of mouth, so I'm not an advocate of Facebook at all. It's all a bunch of fluff. But you had mentioned that, um, this gentleman here, what's his name?
By so?
No.
Taylor McDonald.
Taylor, Taylor McDonald, mentioned that, um, they're gonna start tearing the building down and then April they're gonna start construction. So what am I doing here? Can you prevent what's going on based on everyone's conversation about some areas where they feel uncomfortable about? I mean, I feel uncomfortable. I mean, I feel uncomfortable, not that you're going to build a fire station, that the integrity of the street doesn't meet up to my personal safety standards. So this doesn't really have to do with the location or a fire station or money. It's got to do with providing the firefighters who ride in those trucks a convenient, stress-free ride to get to a fire or an accident. You know, and then Greg, my neighbor, talked about, you know, two-tenths of a mile from the street, when you have studies that you made that are time studies, which meant nothing to me because it's an optimum situation. You can't throw a school bus into that study, you can't throw an accident into that study, you can't throw ice road conditions into that study. So I just think that it would prove everybody here to dig in a little bit deeper before the construction starts. Because I said, I don't understand why I'm here. If the construction's going to start, why am I even talking?
So, we're under a site plan review. The construction can't start until they actually get a building permit, so they have not received a building permit yet. They've received a demolition permit from the town to remove the existing structure that's on the town, which is all they're doing. They have the job out to bid, their timeline to start construction is April. There'd be four of us as a board to do site plan review. The site plan review in front of us is for us to be able to give recommendations and to approve the site based upon what our site plan review requirements are, which are taking into account a whole bunch of idle items. It also does take into account safety. The roadway, like I explained before, as a board, we'll discuss the roadway. If the roadway is deemed by the board to be an issue, we will put that as a recommendation to the town that the town needs to do some additional planning with the roadway as part of the project that goes forward. We cannot force the town to spend money that they don't have or that they can't be approved. That's nothing we can do. The town, as the town meeting members did, they approved this project. They approved the site location, they approved the dollars that go into the project. We can't sit here and stop the project, we can mitigate the way that the project is being done. But the approval of the project was already done prior to getting to us. The project costs, the project location and the project, you know, basically there's a fire station going there. We as a board have can mitigate what's going on, dealing with the safety, dealing with the architectural features, dealing with sound barriers, dealing with landscaping. Those are all things that we still are on the board that we can talk about tonight. And hearing from a lot of the people in town, those are things I'm sure are going to be brought amongst us as we deliberate after I close this part of the public hearing. Right now, that's where we're going forward.
Thank you.
Okay?
The takeaway, just so it's clear to me before I leave, everyone in this room has heard everything from everyone, all their concerns. The takeaway for me, are you concerned about anything?
I've been concerned, we'll support you for a long time, yes.
Okay, does anyone else have some concerns?
A concern?
I'm only asking because I don't know you guys, I mean, you don't even know me either, so...
Absolutely, we've had concerns, we've had multiple meetings and a lot of the concerns have been addressed throughout the process.
Anything new from the people that were in this room tonight to help you out?
Well, more about the condition of Turnpike Street needing, not Turnpike, Prospect Street, and possibly needing curbing. There is sidewalks, but the water main is going to be replaced, so the road is going to be dug up. That's coming up in the future, so that's something we can talk to the engineering department, DPW, and if that's something that can be addressed once that water main is done.
The water main project, when does that start?
I think that was, was that approved at town meeting?
Yeah, so that's already been approved through town meeting. I'm not sure what the schedule is through the public works department.
Curbing going in for length of the road?
It's just the water main project at this point.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time and happy to have a chance to talk.
Thank you.
I would like to clarify one of the comments that were just made about response time or traffic situations being taken in some fantasy ideal situation. The response time analyses that were performed for this site as well as eight or ten or twelve other sites over the last four and a half years are not make-believe based on ideal situation numbers. These are numbers taken right from the call data, thousands and thousands and thousands of calls over years with real traffic data and analyzed. And the metrics that are used are set by the NFPA. If we can get to a fire, if the fire department can get to an event in four minutes, that's the gold standard. Under eight minutes is great, beyond that is a different discussion. This site is, again, as I mentioned earlier, and I'm not making it up, I'm not smart enough to be able to determine this, but what I understand is it's nearly perfect. Yes, the driveway is eight hundred and fifty feet long. It still meets the criteria of very, very good response time. So I just, I'm not going to say I'm offended, but I want to make it clear that the analysis was done thoroughly.
Sure, I have a question. Where is this point coming out of Freeman? Building currently coming to the square?
It's pretty good, even with all the traffic.
Does it meet the four to eight minute standard?
Not quite as well to the southeast side of town, right, given its geographic location. But the fire department has a great track record and is fortunate to be fairly well-located, although Freeman Street is not a great location because they've outgrown it. But in an abstract data analysis perspective, it is a pretty good spot. Prospect Street is better regardless of the traffic in the square. Right, because there's not always traffic, but certainly many times where there is. Anybody else in town?
Still Peter Murphy, still sixty Peters Drive. In relation, our respect to the neighbors, in when construction starts, my concern, I've had this with other buildings going on such as Ikea, Stoughton for some reason puts a lot of rocks in the ground. And as you know, I know a lot of the target projects, can there be a restriction put on this project that they cannot start their, what do you call when you start to break up rocks? There's a term for it. The hammer drill?
Yeah, the hammer drill.
That that...
Well, there is, there is, there is a restrict, there is and will be a restriction, the construction can't stop before seven AM.
All right, when does it start?
Three thirty.
Thank you.
Good evening, Baltimore nineteen Global Lane. I live behind there in Tangowood area and I noticed that, just want to follow up on a couple of things that were mentioned earlier in the meeting. Someone lived on Christie Murphy Way asked about a fence being put around the site so she wouldn't be able to see if it would be safe. Is that going to be a possibility?
It's a discussion we're going to bring up as a board.
Okay, well, that's in your...
That's not approved.
If you're in purview, so I mean, that would be approved for a safety factor, that should be a necessity by the town. Also, I've heard about noise mitigation, it wasn't really looked at very well. Is this going to be something that's going to be looked at, the neighbors there? Because something like this should not even be contemplated until that piece of the project is done.
That's come up on previous meetings. They don't use their sirens for one unless they have to. They don't automatically, we have a call, you know, it's not at twelve.
Well, I understand that, but is that going to be written in the specs that this is what's expected?
I mean, that's standard practice with the fire department, there's no need to write that into a spec.
Okay, so the neighbors will be expecting that there won't be sirens?
Right, unless there's a car that's not going to let them out or something to that effect, they're going to give them a blast of the horn.
Okay. Now, you also mentioned about the view of the equipment on top of the building.
That's right.
Is that going to be batteries up so you won't be able to see that stuff?
We're going to take a look at that as soon as, like I said, we're going to discuss that further as soon as...
I appreciate that because, you know, as neighbors, we don't want to be able to, there's another part of the town we should be respected too, that we don't see that piece, you know, so, I mean, that's all we ask for. We support the fire department, the firefighters and everything as you do, but we also are paying taxes, unless you're going to give some big tax breaks, we expect. I mean, we're paying more and more taxes every year, every year.
Oh, I know, I just got my tax bill, my house...
I'm just saying it's not going to lock that, you know, and I do respect your time here and everything, but, you know, as neighbors, we want our piece of the fire too, done correctly, that's all. Thank you very much for your time and I appreciate everything that this board does and the fire department does too. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Michael Chow, Fire Chief. First, thank you, Land Board. I understand this is a long meeting and we appreciate it, you know, for the residents to having a voice. As I've spoken at quite a few meetings is that we don't want to be a burden on anybody that's actually counterproductive to actually what we are and how we serve. That being said, I just wanted to touch on some points. I understand the whole idea of open transparency and there might be a little bit of difficulty in today's world on where do most things end. You know, I'm not really into getting, I can still reserve more than some sort of debates on social media. I just, I just don't think that's where I use as a platform. Even with procurement, you know, we have to, a lot of the local papers that I grew up, my father reading, he had fries, they go with the Patriot Ledger line, I have no idea. We tried to have, we had site visits, we have, I have signed site visits of people that did show up on November sixteenth and November tenth. Our committee, the select board voted this through. We tried to join it into our open house. The timeline was short, I understand residents got it, you know, the Friday before because of the mail, but I did try to invite them there. I've always had no policy at the firehouse. Anytime anybody wants to talk about this, I'm always, I will make myself available. I have to to a number of people and I will continue to. Dr. Graham, you know, we did have virtual meetings on the financing of it and I do understand that the PINCon voted against it. There was more of a, you know, how is this going to be paid for? But from what I understood, but also, even though the PINCon voted against this, the town of Stoughton residents voted for it along with town meeting. And the town residents had a ballot. So, you know, I felt if I dropped the ball in any way as far as transparency, I apologize, I'll take responsibility for that, but, you know, on this project, the minute I stepped in as chief and, you know, this committee was formed, I was very transparent to the architect. I'm staying in my lane, you want to talk operations of fire departments, fire service, I'll talk it all day long. But when it starts getting into schematics or policies presented, I relied on the experts. The same with the engineering, same with the environment, same with the scientists about what type of wildlife lives out there or plants that are out there, so, you know, if it wasn't, if it wasn't addressed to the public in the way in which it was expected, I apologize, you know, but what I can say is I feel as if, I've been living this for a number, I'm sure we've been living this for a long time, since nineteen ninety-eight study, you know, multiple studies since town is paid. And when I went into this, it was about being fiscally responsible to the residential bank for a new school and I understood that. And then there are some questions, you know, eight hundred and fifty feet, well, as a firefighter, a fire officer and a fire chief, I look at, okay, response time, eight hundred and fifty feet or eight hundred, eight fifty Park Street, which is a little under a mile away. Now, you thought for response time, so I got to measure eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty feet to pull out or another mile away from the optimal site. Or an issue comes to us, we basically, we evaluate, we decide and we execute. I mean, that's kind of how we handle things and that's an easy decision to make. Eight hundred and fifty feet for a little bit more than a mile away from an optimal response site? That's kind of how I look at it. So, again, you know, I still remain, my door is open, my phone, my voicemail goes to my email, I will get it. I'm here for part of public to serve the public, to serve the residents, to serve the community and that just doesn't stop on emergency situations. So I thank you again, I appreciate it, I appreciate the hard work, I appreciate the residents for showing up and asking questions and I certainly appreciate the firefighters behind me in support of this and I thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
I want to thank everybody tonight for being respectful. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and all the comments. It's actually left a lot of things open for us as a board to be able to discuss. At this point, I would like to close the public part of this meeting so that we're going to come into the board to be able to discuss this project further. I'd also like to take a five-minute recess because I'd like to go to the restaurant. Okay, I'm opening the meeting back up again. Again, I want to thank the public for all the input and the discussions tonight. I think there's been a lot of good information been brought forward and it's something that we want to discuss. So, on the site plan review and something we should discuss is the safety around the site. And one of the items that I heard from people was the access into the site from different directions, especially the residential site being adjacent to it. So, in that fact, I've looked at it, I think there's a limited construction shown on the drawings. I'm going to go back to any one of these plans does show a limited construction line. C three shows it probably the best. I'd like to propose to the applicant that we create a black chain link fence to wrap around that limited construction line, you know, around that entire site. And I'd be open to the board whether we should be a four or six-foot fence, but that would be something we should look at and we should discuss. We do have a white fence coming out at the entrance of the roadway, so I would tie into that white fence and then just follow the limited construction around the site. I believe that would encompass it the best and allow that we're kind of keeping within the limits and we're not extending that out beyond that point.
You're saying around the whole site?
I'm saying where you have a limited construction line.
Yeah.
So where that limited construction line is around the site is what I would, so it's not the, not the lot line, not the lot line, but the limited construction line. If the board would be, look at that, that's one of the items that, I think that would help mitigate the safety issue that was brought up by some of the neighbors in the residential areas. In speaking to the sound barriers, we could add to some of the landscaping that's along that residential area. And also, one of the requirements that we do have as far as our site plan review is that the existing HVAC systems on the roof cannot be seen from outside of the, you know, from the building or from the ground, so I would recommend, as if the board looks at this the same way, that we would be putting a parapet or some sort of parapet screen, at least on three sides of the building to power, to screen the mechanical systems that are on the roof. That's going to help with two things, is the visual screening and then the sound screening for all the residential neighbors that are in that area in the way we brought it up. So those two items are some of the things that I've seen. The work that's proposed on Prospect Street right now, I don't know what that plan looks like, I just do know we have some water lines being done out there. Knowing what water line projects happen, that's probably going to worsen the situation that exists on Prospect Street right now. I would like to recommend to the applicant and to the, which is basically the town, that that street gets modified or brought back up to town standards, which would... which would, which would encompass a sidewalk on both sides of the street, which would encompass vertical curbing on the street. And that would be part of what we should do as far as a recommendation to the town. I don't know, we can't put it onto the project to do because the project wasn't part of that, that money in the project. But it is something that we can recommend to the town, it's something that we should push forward as far as the approval from this board with the town.
I have a question on that. I don't know if there'd be enough room for sidewalks or a lot. We rely on the state layout for that road.
I, I agree and that's part of what the engineering design would have to be as far as once the town designs something for that road. I, I agree. I don't know what the layout is of the road. But again, that's something that I think we, we as a board should push back and say to the town, you need to design something along that road. You're putting a pretty large project and you're tearing up the road by putting a water line in. We need to bring it back and if it was a private developer doing the same thing, would we require the private developer to pay for it? Unfortunately, right now, we can't, we can't force the town.
Well, I think once that's going to be done, I don't think the town's going to do it and probably go out to bid. And that would be part of the contractor's responsibility to repave the road once it's.
I don't know if that's in the provision, it's just a trench repave on the, on the, it's, it's a trench repave.
Yeah, it's a full melon.
So, it's not a full oval lay, so that's not going to be part of what we're going to get as far as what they put out to bid. Unfortunately. Is that, is that specifications made for that already?
Yeah.
The specs are done. When's it going out to bid, you know?
I think roughly the same time as us.
And the money's been approved?
Yeah, with the town meeting from last year.
So, if there is additional money, we could maybe do something, but unless we know what the bids are going to be, we don't know.
Right.
One of the questions that was brought up by one of the residents was that this was a backfilled site that was left. I don't know the history of the site. Have we done any drawings out there that, that would tell us one way or another what's been done there?
Too many.
I, I, I just asked a question.
I think in five different mobilizations, there are about sixty test pits, including a few deep pits. Some of those were part of the formal stormwater management plan to check the condition of the soils. But a lot of them were done prior to the purchase of the site as part of the town's due diligence. And I think there were sixteen or so, but there are. And to your, to answer your question, I guess, there is a good bit of old fill, right? And we've, we've tried to cover that with five and a half thousand cubic yards that the project already owns in the base bid of removing and replacing with proper fill. I don't think there's that much, but better to own more and get a credit later.
Okay, so you're, you're saying you've got five and a half thousand cubic yards leaving the site?
Five thou, up to five thousand five hundred cubic yards of unsuitable material can be, can be, is owned by the general contractor. If, again, I can't imagine we need to do that, but that'd be taking a couple of feet off of the entire work area.
So, a part of their base bid they own, removal and replacement of five thousand cubic yards.
Correct, as well as some hundreds of yards of, of nasty rock excavation and trench rock leg removal.
Is that within our clearing as far as how many yards we can do this within the amount of yards that we'll have? So, then for clearing and, and site removal material, what's it seventy-five?
Yeah, I don't remember the, the threshold for that.
There is a threshold for what can be removed off the site.
Yeah, so I think some of it's going to be redistributed, right, so.
Yeah, relocation of the site, but if removed off of the site, there is.
It's not all designated to be trucked off the site. It can be redistributed in the landscaped areas.
Thank you. Good. I think both Taylor and Craig were ready to correct me. Removing being, removing from the, the area to be built, but can be, it's already been approved to be stored on site. So, yeah, not trucking it away by the tractor trailer load day and night now.
And I just wanted to add, clarification too, is anywhere underneath the building footprint will go down to virgin soils. During that process, there'll be a geo-technical engineer onboard who monitors that to make sure that they are getting down to virgin soils and any fill is coming out of those areas, so.
What's the ballpark depth, do you know?
I'd have to look at the, the test pits.
It's about three to five feet.
Three to five feet, yeah.
Below footed?
Uh, no, below slab, so.
So, you're at footed now?
Yeah, I mean, the bottom of footings look pretty good in most areas, but just in case, if there are deeper pockets.
So, both, you know, yeah, we try to estimate high or the estimated, tries to estimate high on the cubic volume that comes out. And then when your geo-technical engineer is out there, you know, he's watching it go down, he might say, all right, stop, you're at virgin, you don't need to go any further. So, that's part of the process.
Thank you. So, do anybody else on board have any comments, thoughts, notes from what you take?
You've got, you've got it covered.
Okay.
I've got a few questions.
Go ahead, no asking, please.
I mean, where the driveway comes out on Prospect Street, is there, is there an ability for those people that live there to have street parking? You know, say they have people visiting and stuff like that. Is that an issue that, that'd be street parking? Because I know two, two of those properties are right there. It's like, you know, we're going to be putting up, no park, no street parking here, et cetera. Somebody has a party or something, they could be parking up the yard.
If I understand correctly, you're, you're.
On Prospect Street, you're saying?
On Prospect, yeah.
Okay.
And as, where they come out, the, the driveway is, so if they're taking the right or the left. Those two, those houses along the side there, if they have people visiting and stuff like that, they're going to have people parking on the street. Is the street able to handle that? I saw it kind of parked up on the front lawn in one of the pictures.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, hard to tell, but what I can explain or describe is that there is vertical granite curb right up to the edge of Prospect Street, assuming that in the future there may be curb and sidewalk. There is a sign, there's fencing, a formal landscape buffer on both sides of the driveway. So, one would hope someone wouldn't park in front of the driveway?
We're not, we're not proposing to put any parking restrictions.
Fine, you're not proposing. It is, it's not okay.
I just want to tell see you stumble for a bit.
Thank you.
So, that was an interview.
That, that intersection of Prospect and Walnut, now, I know they're putting stop signs, stop signs. This, according to state regulations, the, that doesn't warrant.
Signal?
Signal lights, right? Okay, so that, I mean, we need to make that clear.
Right, and that's why we're, what we do have is, you're talking about Prospect and Pleasant?
No, Prospect and Walnut.
None of them warranted, that's why we, they do have a blinking light at Walnut and there was stop signs being added there. And the stop signs being added at Pleasant Street and the stop signs being added at.
Would you recommend, I mean, you did your study, would you recommend that we recommend?
Okay, there's no way that we can do this anyways, right?
We can't, we can't force the town to put stop signs. We're not going to, we're not going to recommend something.
No, the other, the other thing, even the, the park at Prospect is state jurisdiction anyway, so it's, it's up to them whether they would even approve it. If it was warranted, whether they would approve a, a signal there, so. But the Walnut at Prospect, as, as Mark had said, that is part of the Walnut Street project, so that will also be getting upgraded there, so.
Is the, is the fire department comfortable with everything that was proposed on the, the, for the stop, stop signs and lighting? And anything that you wanted to like add that you might want to add?
This is a loaded question. You set me up. I thought I kind of wanted to drop the mic and walk away. No, listen, we absolutely understand. I was just actually laughing to myself back there. I feel like the Foregarden Street has trained us very well. You talked about the parking. I mean, you guys drive down Foregarden Street, you see the people across the street, they just line right in front of the bays and everything. So, no, I think there are a lot of due diligence went into this. We want to assist in any way. And of course, you, you all know, we're respected with, you know, budgeting. I would love to do the road over. I'd love, you know, I'd love to add anything I can to help, but I feel like this, they have looked at everything. I, I can promise you, Assistant Chief and I, we will be putting our policies in, making sure that everything, again, we want to be good neighbors. Prospect Street is just one of those streets. It goes straight off twenty-seven. What I do like about it on the safety thing, I really do like now, is line of sight. You know, nobody's coming around the corner at our entrance. We're not, you know, that's really important because, again, we ride like this, the driver, the officer. We got four sets of eyes, not to mention the two behind us. So, I believe that with the right training, as we continue to do, the way this layout is presented, listen, I don't, I can't account for everything, but I think it's, it's pretty well set. I think the problem with Prospect Street has been ongoing as you know, for a very long time.
And I'll have to say that fire trucks are the most respectful group of people on the roads when they go into an emergency. They're just top notch.
And that message is best on, just so you know, we understand. It does no good for us to come up behind anybody and blast a fire and or scare anybody. It just adds more chaos and probably another accident. It's not what we want to be.
You guys feel great, Joe.
Thank you.
You're getting out of Foregarden Streets.
Like I said, that was, that might be the new training.
I think that's it for me, right, Greg?
At this time, at this time, I want to formally take a vote that we're closing the public hearing. The public hearing part of this is closed. I could have a motion to.
I'll make that, make that motion, close the public hearing.
Can all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing part of this is closed. There has been recommendations tonight about fence screening, recommendation about the road. There are special permits of conditions of approval that have been asked for as far as the technical review. I think you know there are six different parts of what Craig has asked for. Those are just technical things we're going forward. So, at this time, what I would like you to do so that we can vote for this properly is to ask for continuance from us till the next meeting. You update your drawings, get things up to where we're looking for. In that next meeting, we can take a vote, one way or the other, to approve this project.
When's the next meeting?
February twenty-third.
Do we have enough in the meeting?
Hampton Inn and Stoughton Logistics on that meeting.
I'd like you to go to the last meeting if you could. Is that, is that going to hurt your construction time?
The, the GC bids would be March eighth. So, we have, we have an opportunity at the end of February to get any meaningful changes.
Let's do that. It's for the, it's for the February meeting.
Okay, February twenty-third.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Yes.
Through you to the chair, I had one question. We talked about the chain link fence and I think that's very doable and the screening, but you said parapet and.
I want some, I want, I don't, I'm, I'm not going to get into an architectural thing, but I do, I would like you to send it to us as a board so we can take a look at it before the meeting, so I don't sit here and say that thing is the worst thing I've ever seen and I'm going to fuck you up.
Exactly. When you said parapet, I could just feel.
We would certainly recommend just a screen more around the unit.
No, we don't, we don't usually allow screening around the unit. What I'm looking at is screening around the perimeter of the wall. It's not so much screening around the units, because that just individually does each unit. So, the way the recommendations in our site review is it's usually a screening around the perimeter of the building. So, it is more like a parapet.
That, that, that's a significant change in the design and cost. I'm not sure what else we could recommend besides like proper acoustic aesthetic screening inboard.
But you're saying it needs to go around the entire perimeter of the building?
We, it's, I mean, something we can look at, but it is, it's just the way it normally is done, the way we've done it with that. And our architectural standards show that as far as what we're doing. It's not individual screening of each unit. It is actually a perimeter of the building screening. We've allowed less of that. We've allowed some screening to step back. It does not have to be a parapet or the same materials of the building, but it is a screening that we do require go around the building.
The backside of the woods wouldn't need any kind of screening.
So, it could be, it could be a screen or something architectural, a barrier along the front of the building.
Front and the two sides.
That's not necessarily a parapet or a wall or.
But something that may be higher than what you have there for your R T U units now and that goes around from the front and down the two sides.
And it has to be screened from, if you're on the site, you can't see the units.
And well, right now, that site is lower than the, the surrounding area. So, you'd want to especially take from a residential site looking at that side, so that we're, we're trying to screen those units from that point.
Would a, a line of sight study help? I think the only house is the resident that backs up on Christie Murphy right to the, within seventy-five feet of the property line. They're a little bit higher. The other houses are so far up, I don't think it's a concern, but on the Prospect Street side, they're significantly lower. You probably, I'm sure you know what I'm getting at, the line of sight and the type that the building is set so far back, it's.
I guess the other thing is I, and I, I haven't done a well enough study of your roof study, but what I'm looking at from your elevations and you're taking a straight on elevation is that those units look like they're right on top of the roof. If they're back far enough into the roof, then I can't see them from a, from a line of sight from somewhere, whether it's from the residence or from there and it's blocking the sound, especially on that right hand side, that's what we're looking at. But if the units are within, you know, fifteen feet of the roof and I'm looking at a five foot thing and I'm looking at it, that's what I'm trying, that's what we're trying to prevent. If they're inward of the roof or far enough into the building, it's, it's not an issue because I can't see them. If I could see them, it's.
Thank, that's a good point. We'll, we'll show what the characteristics are. We've said, and they're fairly small, as I mentioned.
Do you have a roof plan on here?
Not in your set. We, we included elevations and plans.
Could you get a roof plan sent to me?
Absolutely. I'll also take our, you know, we can take the views of the model.
I would like that, yes.
And show where, where anywhere you might be able to catch a view.
That would be great to have for the next meeting.
Okay.
And then to show us what type of screening and what you, what you're planning on doing for those areas.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that.
Essentially be important for a safety factor. I like the evergreens that are along the side. That works in those areas. I like the white fence off front, so unless the board has any other recommendations or thoughts, we will put into the decision, you know, recommendation to the town of both the upgrades on Prospect Street, understanding this not anything, but it is going to be part of our recommendations.
So, I just, I just want to be clear, just so our two things are the fence and the screening.
Those are the two things that I have right now. Does anybody else have anything else? From the board?
I don't think we need the screening, but.
We'll do, we'll do the proper due diligence to show what it looks like with and without an empty bed hulk.
Just take another look at the landscape and to see if there's any other areas that would be, could be enhanced a little bit with.
Sure.
Privacy, residency. Now, now's a good time to look at it because.
That's all, no leaves.
Yeah.
No, I think it's clear when you're on the site now with no, none of the leaf, leafing out that, that one house, because it is a, it's a sheer driveway how they go so far back on that site. But they are, they are the only ones within.
Well, as I said, we get a six foot fence in that area and then we get the things around. I think that's going to satisfy her issues and when I was a kid, I would have been the first one to build a construction site somewhere.
And also, thank you for recommending black chain link instead of the white line. I think visually the black chain link would disappear, but do the job of keeping them safe.
Right, and the white fence where it is, that's, that, that works, that usually works, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you.
The only thing I did look at, Craig, is, was the dumpster pad, we located, we had that location.
Yeah, they have a, a good dumpster closure.
Okay, good. You're going to ask for continuance throughout the next meeting?
Yeah, at this time, we'd like to request a continuance.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to accept the continuance? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you with the Linda February.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for everybody putting their time in after the end of the week. Thank you very much for everybody putting their time in after the end of the week. Yeah, let's get that done next. So, opening up general business, we have the meeting minutes for December 8th to approve.
By the cemetery's. Like an old mall that has a pond.
Yeah.
Yeah, go right there, and then go by the cemetery. Yeah, it's messy cemetery, so I go to cop school. I go to cop school and I get...
Okay, let's get to the meeting, then, we can get to that. Does anybody have any questions, any changes in the meeting minutes for December 8th? Can I have a motion to accept? Can I have a motion to accept?
The back and forth.
Motion to accept. The meeting minutes for December 8th? December 8th, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, other business, Mr. Terry.
As a member of the board, the CPTC, the chair asks me to mention to this board about the extension of the... to try to eliminate these...
I don't know who first and seconded. No, it's the minutes.
He's trying to eliminate the CPTC.
Yeah, that's a new thing.
Really?
Yeah. It's crazy.
Well, your system value keeps going up, they have a lot of $100,000.
It's only a budget board, I mean, they call that much money in a project.
You know what, though, everything is, it's 80 bucks, 50 bucks, 60 bucks. My property taxes $7,400 a year.
Who's suggesting this, whichever one of us? She's a select board chair. Is she on the month, get rid of it? Oh my God. I don't get a vote, but I fully agree with him doing it.
So, Mr. Terry, what can we do as a board?
Well, we as a board, we have a report for against this, that's what I just said. Hope his face is going to seem the same joy as when he sent you the letter with the public language, his committee. So it's at the wish of the board, but as a member of the CPTC, I was asked to alert you guys, please.
No, is this for it?
So...
We do not support any legislation that would...
I would ask the board for their recommendation as to what you would like to do as far as either recommending, supporting this recommendation or going against this recommendation by Roberta Habeck as far as what she would like to do with the...
I suggest we take no action, let Roberta Habeck do her thing, she worked out.
Anybody else have any suggestions?
If this board wants to do something, I would be more than happy to write that letter for us.
I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be in support of maintaining the CPA and not doing anything with it at this point in time, but that would be my recommendation. As far as leaving and keeping, I would be against little Robert Habeck, because I guess is what I'm trying to say.
If you look at the legislation, it basically says William Yalvin by request, that means he's not pushing this legislation. He's only doing that representing the...
Right, so I, an act relative accepted, so that's what I'm... I would be, I would not be in favor of a change to the CPC or CPA, that would be my opinion. I'll make the motion to the board that I would be against any changes to the CPA, and that we should write a letter in not support of this particular change. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We'll give four.
I'll put the narrative.
If you put the narrative together, we'll take a look at it. Anything else, anybody, Pam?
Um...
Hey, this is Lee.
Yeah, I know, because I lost one. Okay, real quick, the CPTC annual conference that I think, I'm not sure if any, you must have gone to it, Dan? It's going to be on March 18th at Holy Cross, so they haven't given out any more information on what workshops they'll be.
Wasn't that one of the workshops, the online workshops is supposed to...
No, this is an annual conference, it's usually in person.
Yeah, that is usually person, I thought the online...
Yeah, those were in addition to it, those workshops that people were taking. So as soon as they say what the actual workshops are going to be at that, I'll just let people know. And then the only other thing was, you probably saw, there's an ad for the town planner that just went out, so you will be getting hopefully a permanent person, that this is their only job, and I'll help them, I'll help them and maybe work on some of the zoning projects and things, too. And then for our future meeting locations, it's a disaster because of the town hall, you know, with the flooding there. So I was trying to get this space for our next few meetings, but there's a conflict, so I have to work on that. But I'll let everybody know, so just make sure you check with me, or I'll send out emails before you drive to the meeting, I have to let you know where to go. So that's it.
Thank you very much, can I have a motion to... All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you very much, it was a meeting, I appreciate you.